We would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
You look out my back window here on the east side and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock, and at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do, and the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 211. We're here to support you.
From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada, a new hero will emerge. One who is ready. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season. You're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Calling to order, June 24th meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Let's stand for the pledge, and Michelle, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful, thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any corrections or deletions to the agenda?
Chair, there is an errata agenda that was published yesterday, Monday, June 23rd, with no additions, just a renumbering and reordering of the items.
Thank you. So just to be clear for folks in the audience, if you picked up an agenda or printed it out from last Thursday, there's a new one that was printed, that came out yesterday, substantively the same, but just the numbers ordering the items are different, okay? We are going to have one substantive item here before the consent agenda, so if you're here to talk about something on the consent agenda, just hang tight. This next presentation is going to be one that's going to help frame and set up a number of the behavioral health items that are on the consent agenda. So with that, I'm going to ask Phoebe and Ryan to come up.
Chair Hall, members of the board, Ryan River, your Health and Human Services Agency Director, joined by Phoebe Bell, our Behavioral Health Director, to whom I will turn it over in a moment since this is a behavioral health item. But before that, I wanted to provide some comments because while the item is behavioral health, HHSA relies so heavily on contracts, not just in behavioral health, and because today we have most of our renewal items on the agenda, I wanted to provide some framing context in terms of the contracts that HHSA brings. Contracts are used for one-time grants and Board of Supervisors priorities heavily throughout the county. And then in HHSA in particular, we also rely on those contracts for delivery of our mandated core services. In HHSA, this practice really took off with the bursting of the dot-com bubble in the early 2000s, especially in behavioral health, when the Mental Health Services Act was coming into place with an expansion of services at a time when the county was contracting staffing. Our contracted services really took off in behavioral health in particular. So contracting is a way to spend funds that we have and not build some of the liabilities and be able to tailor our services to the amount of revenue that's available, particularly with a volatile stream like Mental Health Services Act funding. Just under 40% of the total HHSA expenses are contracted services, and in behavioral health, that's 70% of their services are contracted services. Sometimes that's for out-of-county treatment, so when we have a treatment level that somebody needs and it only exists in another county, we're sending those dollars out. Thankfully, we have a grant to bring some of that hopefully into Nevada County, but that's part of it. But then also specialized services that could come from Turning Point, who Phoebe will talk about in a moment, 211 services, Freed Services, where we have a partner that provides that specialized service, which is a core mandated service, but something that's more suited for a contracted provider. We have numerous ways that outcomes and deliverables come from those contracts. Many are actually billed based on outcomes, so for our housing contracts, for example, we're not just giving a provider a lump sum, they're invoicing us based on actually housing people. And so the outcome is the billing that we provide to them. Many are billed based on, many outcomes come back to the board for specific presentations. So a couple of months ago, you heard from Connecting Point on 211 Day, where they come before the board and present what they do with county funds as well as other funds. Some get wrapped, some outcomes get wrapped into annual reports, so part of your agenda today is the 2324 Behavioral Health Annual Report, which I believe there are copies available here if people are interested in that. Many outcomes come to special boards, like the Mental Health and Substance Use Advisory Board gets specific data and outcomes. The Community Corrections Partnership reviews data related to the criminal justice system, et cetera. And then, and then also, of course, there's the ClearPoint reports that come to your board throughout the year, as well as the updates that you receive at your annual workshop. So we are buried in outcomes and deliverables from all those contracts, and there are numerous mechanisms to get them back to your board. So with that, I'll turn it over to Phoebe unless there are any questions for me.
Go ahead, thank you.
Thanks so much, Chair Hall, members of the board, Phoebe Bell, Behavioral Health Director. And like Ryan said, I wanted to add a little bit of context to the specific Turning Point contract in front of you, but also the array of behavioral health contracts that are in front of you this meeting, as well as the previous meeting, and probably the next meeting. So the first piece of context is understanding the fiscal picture of the Behavioral Health Department. As you may recall, almost two years ago now, we switched sort of the business model of how the public behavioral health system works in California. We switched from what was a cost-based reimbursement system, where essentially you were guaranteed that your costs would be covered, to a fee-for-service model, where we're basically paid for the services we provide at set rates by Medi-Cal dollars. This inherently has some risks and rewards to it. There's no longer certainty that our costs will be covered, but on the flip side, if we're able to generate a lot of Medi-Cal revenue, we can generate more revenue than our costs, which then allow us to reinvest in our system. So for example, the significant project to build an inpatient facility in Nevada County is really possible, in part because of grant dollars, but in part because, under payment reform, we can generate the revenues to cover a new expense like that. So how are we doing in this new system is a really important question as we think about all these contracts. And the great news is, we seem to be doing really well. In the years prior to payment reform starting, we typically billed about $17 or $18 million of Medi-Cal claims per year. In 2324, our first complete year under payment reform, which I will note was a bit of a bumpy year because we also changed documentation systems and electronic health records, we more than doubled our Medi-Cal claims in that year, billing nearly $40 million worth of Medi-Cal services. This is exciting because it really shows the hard work of our system. And when I say our system, I mean our internal county staff, as well as our contracted partners that we'll talk more about. Across the board, we've focused very hard on productivity, on documentation, and on being able to get billings done effectively so that we can generate the revenue that our system needs to grow and meet the needs of our community. Our providers are doing a great job. I especially want to call out the billing team in the Behavioral Health Department, who rose to this massive growth chapter and in really great form. So one other way to look at that is contextually, how are we doing compared to our peer counties? These are other counties that are in our same electronic health record, so we can do apples-to-apples comparison. And it's not a perfect metric, but it basically shows that in Nevada County, we're really being highly effective in maximizing our Medi-Cal revenues. We are really looking at every service we provide and trying to bring it into the Medi-Cal system if we're able to, so that we can pull down that federal money for those services. So this again is what allows our system to grow, our contracts to grow, et cetera. And so as Ryan said, contractors are a really critical part of the behavioral health system. Over 70% of our costs go out the door in contracts, more than 100 contracts with 80 contractors. So when you think you're seeing a lot of behavioral health contracts, you are. And as Ryan said, most of those funds stay local, with the exception of some of our money that goes to out-of-county contracts specifically for inpatient facilities. And again, that's the kind of resource we'll be able to pull back into our county with the creation of our own inpatient facility. We, as a general rule, in the Behavioral Health Department, we provide basic outpatient services with county staff. So we have psychiatry, therapy, nursing, case management, those kinds of basic outpatient services. And then for most of our specialized services, we contract with our community providers. And we have amazing local partners. You can see a list of them here. Specialized services like crisis, or housing, or some of our substance use treatment, all happen through a lot of our community partners, and we basically work with them in the Medi-Cal system. We also have a different set of contracted providers, which tend to be many of our local nonprofits, who provide what we call upstream services. These are programs that focus on what's called, under the Mental Health Services Act, prevention and early intervention. But essentially, segments of our population who are at higher risk for some behavioral health needs down the road. The idea is to get programs in place earlier so that we can get supports and services going to help prevent future mental health crises and needs. And so we specifically fund programs that target seniors, or veterans, or people experiencing homelessness, new moms, things like that, people, subsets of the population that have some higher risks and need some specialized services. We do that with our Mental Health Services Act funding. And so the last piece I wanted to highlight today are some changes happening with what we call MHSA, Mental Health Services Act dollars, to prepare ourselves for what's coming over the next year and how that will change really the face of our contracted system of providers in Nevada County. So about a year ago in California, we passed Proposition 1, also known as the Behavioral Health Services Act. What's important to note about BHSA is that this is not new money. It's taking what was called MHSA and basically giving us a number of new rules around how we can spend that money. And in fact, it's not only not new money, it's slightly less money, because the state is going to keep what they call prevention dollars. So we, the county, will no longer be able to invest in some of our partners that do that prevention work. The state will hold that money and give it to the State Department of Public Health to invest in prevention. So that will shift from a county role to a state role. In addition, there's a kind of overarching shift in perspective to really focus primarily on what the state considers the most vulnerable people in our state right now, which are people experiencing chronic homelessness. That shows up in some new rules about how we spend the money, where we have to show that we're spending an appropriate amount of our money, and then it also shows up in the level of state oversight that's happening. So to make that a little bit more specific, under the BHSA, we will now be required to spend 30% of our annual revenue on housing. Not on the services that support housing, but on literal housing, so rent, maintenance, taxes, insurance, those kinds of things that allow housing to be available. For us, that'll be ballpark about $2 million a year to spend on housing. We currently spend about $1.2 million of our MHSA funds on buying about 96 beds of housing. That's out of a system where we basically house about 220 people a night in housing, different from treatment beds. We also have some new projects coming online through grants we've been applying for that the board's aware of. And so as all those projects hopefully get funded, in terms of their capital costs, those are likely where the rest of our housing dollars will go in terms of annual expenditures on housing costs. Important to note is, as you saw earlier, Medi-Cal is sort of the gas and the engine of the Behavioral Health Department. To use Medi-Cal dollars, we need to put up match money. So to buy a dollar of Medi-Cal services, we pay 50 cents roughly, and the feds pay us back a dollar. So we make 50 cents, but we have to put in our 50 cents to buy that dollar of service. When we start spending money on housing, that's not a Medi-Cal billable activity, so we're pulling money that we're currently spending to buy Medi-Cal services out of the Medi-Cal system and putting it into this non-billable place. So if we pull a dollar out of the Medi-Cal system, we're losing $2 of service. So that also impacts kind of our contractor-provisor relationship. A second area where we're mandated to spend money, that we currently don't spend money, MHSA money specifically, is in substance use disorder services. And clearly, both housing and SUD treatment services are badly needed areas of investment in our state in general and in the behavioral health system. No question about that. The challenge is that, again, with no new money, we're having to take money we currently spend on mental health services and reallocate them across our system in a different way. And so our job is really to try to find a way to do that that doesn't cannibalize our existing services, but allows us to make investments in these new areas. And the last piece I'll say about the Behavioral Services Act changes that are coming is, there's a significant shift in state oversight of these dollars and of the public behavioral health system. Many years ago, in 1991, and again in 2011, states and counties negotiated an agreement that basically shifted a lot of fiscal risk to counties in exchange for a lot of local control over dollars, called realignment dollars. What happens under BHSA is the state pulls back control over all behavioral health funds. Prior to this, the state had control essentially of our MHSA dollars. We had to submit a plan that they would approve, actually that they didn't really approve, but we had to show that we had a plan. Under BHSA, we need to now come up with an integrated plan for every revenue source that funds our public behavioral health system, share that plan with a community planning process that includes over 20 stakeholder organizations, sectors, and groups to get input on how we're spending our money, and then write that into a plan and submit that to the state for approval by March of 2026. That same plan is also essentially our budget, so also paralleling that is our county budget process. And so it's a really different level of state oversight over really all of the funding streams. The state has the ability to say, "We don't think you're spending enough on children under five, or on substance-using homeless adults," or whatever, "and you need to change your spending plan," even though our community planning process might have said something different. So that will be a learning curve for us as a community to figure out how to kind of stay in alignment with the state, as well as local needs and desires. We are beginning that planning process now. We will then be going out to RFP for basically all the different contracts that you saw in these earlier slides and that you see in front of you today. Based on the new funding requirements and what we get out of the community input process, we'll define who we're able to fund in the future going forward. And then ultimately, that three-year integrated plan will come back to the Board of Supervisors prior to July 1 of 2026. Last thing I'll say is, we're working really hard to help our system of contractors come along for this change journey. We are using some MHSA innovation funds to hire a consultant who's working with our providers to think about ways to diversify their funding streams so that they can replace MHSA dollars that will be lost in this transition. We're doing a lot of fiscal modeling to understand where we're going to need to make changes and what that's going to look like. We're having a lot of dialogue with our community partners so that there's no surprises about this process. And then we're really working in-house on developing sort of the data analytics skills and other skills we need internally to be able to manage the expectations moving forward. I think kind of overarching, there is a lot of risk ahead of us, but there's also a lot of good news in terms of how well we're doing under the payment reform switches that have happened. And our ultimate goal is to continue to provide the array of services our community needs in a way that's efficient and effective, and really helps address the behavioral health needs of Nevada County. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Phoebe and Ryan. That was a great overview, very helpful. I'll turn it to my board colleagues if they have any questions. Hardee?
Yeah, thanks. Tremendous amount of work. Job well done. I know this is, it's a lot to orchestrate all this. Just one question on the integrated plan draft. Is that going to come back to the board with enough time to make modifications, should we choose to do so? If, for example, there were items we want to move around, change, without kind of disrupting the outreach process? Because there's probably a lot of stakeholders that you described having input into that plan. I guess my point is, if it shows up here right when it's due, it may not be a great scenario for us to weigh in on things that are specific to our communities.
So typically, the timeline is, it comes to the Mental Health Board first as a public hearing, and then it's open for a month as a public input process, and then typically that closes, and it comes back to the board fairly close to that June 30th deadline. But I understand your point, and so I think that's something we can dialogue about. Are there other ways to think about that?
Yeah, and we can read it when it opens a public comment after the board finds their comments. Thank you.
Rob?
No questions, but thanks, Phoebe. I think that sometimes it's helpful. It's so, convoluted is not the word I want to be, but yet it is. There's so many tentacles to this that it's really a challenge. And one thing that I'm challenged with, I think counties do their better job of managing their dollars. And this puts another clothespin on what you guys do and how we have to figure things out. So just appreciated the work. I mean, the work you do at the state level as well is so beneficial for our community. Thank you for that. That's a, seriously, what an honor that we have you there managing and having a voice like that. So thank you for that. And yeah, thank you for the overview. There's a lot of contracts. We do this every year, I read through those, and I'm overwhelmed sometimes when you look at how. But then I thought, if you had to employ all the people that manage that, we couldn't do, we couldn't meet our, we couldn't meet our goals. So anyway, I just want to thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment on this item only. And if you want to call in, start calling in now, probably. Go ahead.
Hi, Michael Taylor, District 1. I'm going to take this opportunity. I rarely have positive things to say. I'm pretty hard on staff and Board of Supervisors. And I really want to appreciate, say to Phoebe, I really appreciate everything she does, and she is an amazing person with my interactions that I've had, very few of them, but she's an amazing person. And I think what she's juggling and how she's juggling it, and juggling it 24/7 all year long is amazing. I think as a community, we are very fortunate to have you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. Any other public comment in the room? Any comments on the caller? Any callers?
No callers, Chair.
Okay, we're going to close public comment. Back to the board, any other final comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, I will look for a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Resolution number one, resolution approving execution of renewal contract with Turning Point Community Programs, Inc., for the provision of mental health services, adult assertive community treatment program services, and integrated healthcare services as part of the integration service team in the maximum amount of $6,68,994 for the term of July 1, 25 through June 30, 26.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, thank you.
District 5?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes. All right, thank you so much, Ryan and Phoebe. Okay, now we're moving into consent calendar. These items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. The Board of Supervisors will act upon them at one time without discussion. Any board member may request that an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion. Members of the public wishing to ask questions or hear discussion on items listed under the consent agenda may now raise their concerns to the board members. The supervisors will take these concerns under consideration and decide if there's adequate reason to remove the item from consent. So I am going to right now announce that I am removing item number 57 on this errata agenda, which is also known as 25-750, the one that we received a number of comments on. So what that means is, we will, after I finish my announcements, we'll have general public comment on the entire consent agenda except for that item, and then we'll move to that item and have a separate public comment time for that item, so that we can spend the time we need on that, okay? So I also want to announce that item number 79 is approving an amended Board of Supervisors meeting calendar, and so that the next meeting, July 8th, will be held in Nevada City in exchange for the August 12th meeting moving to Truckee. So that's one change in this calendar. Want to remind folks on the phone, if they wanted to make comment, to call in, start calling in now. And let's open public comment on the consent calendar minus the code compliance item.
I'm not exactly sure. I should know. I'm not exactly, I'd like to have 45 polled, but if it's not polled, I would like to make a public comment on it.
Oh, why don't you go ahead and make your public comment, Michael? If we still need to poll it, we still can.
I'll take my chances that it get polled. Thank you.
Okay, I can ask right now if someone on the board wants to poll it. Anybody want to poll item 45? Rob, it sounds like you're... Let's poll it? Okay, we'll poll that item. Any other items that want to be polled?
I'd like to poll item 11.
Okay, so 45, 11, 50, not 57. Okay, any other comment on the consent agenda minus items, actually, yeah, minus items 45, 11, and 57? And any callers? Madam Clerk?
No callers, Chair.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the board. So now I'm looking for a motion and a second on consent calendar minus items 45, 11, and 57. Looking for a motion.
I'll move to approve. Consent minus 11, 57, and 45.
Second.
Sorry.
Kit, go ahead.
Supervisor Bullock, you were, you had to announce your recusal.
Yeah, thanks. I'd like to recuse myself on items 5, 17, and 42. I own property that is leased to Bright Futures for Youth.
Okay, my apologies, I could have said that.
I'd actually like to resent my motion. I'll let another colleague make that.
I'll make the motion for approval of the consent minus items 57, 45, and 11, acknowledging that Supervisor Bullock is recusing himself. and acknowledging that Supervisor Bullock is recusing himself on...
5, 17.
5, 17, and 42.
Thank you. Okay, I need a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All right.
District Five?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District One?
Yes. Oh, great. Great. Thank you. So we're going to go in this order. We're going to start with item 11, then item 45, and then item 57. So item 11, Supervisor Bullock, that was your item?
Yeah, thank you. I'll be really brief. I just, I'm really happy to see the, the contract with Hospitality House for 1.7, approximately 1.7 million, to support our homeless population in West County. And I know that organization's done a lot to support people in West County. We're making a huge push in East County to both to kind of develop the infrastructure, but also have a landing spot in a nonprofit fiscal partner in East County that can accept funds such as this to do orientation services in East County. And I just wanted a quick question of staff to see, A, if Hospitality House would be willing to or benefit from a partnership in East County, should we get a recipient organization that can help us up there? And question, or part B is really, if there's unfunded or unspent funds related to this approval, could those be transferred over to an organization that could help us get some of these services installed in East County?
Sure. Thanks, Supervisor Bullock. So the Hospitality House contract has sort of two strands of funding in it. One strand is really Mental Health Services Act dollars, like we just talked about. That's kind of ongoing core funding that we've provided to them for a number of years. We purchase essentially two full-time staff people with that funding to do homeless outreach and case management. The rest of the funding is grant funding that we received, I think, two years ago now, Behavioral Health Bridge Housing Funding. There's one more year left in that grant funding, and that's basically pays for a number of motel rooms, master leased houses, and the staffing to support those houses. That funding is, we've been trying to spend that in Truckee as well. That funding expires in a year, so once that funding is done, it will, you know, unless a new grant source comes forth, that will be probably the end of that program per se. In the course of the year, were there an opportunity to partner in Truckee with some of that funding between now and June 30th of next year? Yes. We do, just as a reminder, also similarly fund AMI housing for Truckee services, very similar to how we fund Hospitality House. So we pay for 1.3 staff of homeless outreach and case management. So that core, core service piece that we're buying from Hospitality House is mirrored in that AMI contract.
Scale differently for obvious reasons. Okay. Thanks. You answered my question. I appreciate it.
Any public comment on this item? Any callers on item 11?
No callers.
Okay. We'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. Questions or comments, or I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the resolution approving execution of renewal contract for Foothill House of Hospitality.
So moved.
Second.
Who, did you get that? Who was, who made the motion?
Yeah, yeah.
Hardy made the motion.
I'll move to approval of it. Thanks.
And second.
Okay. Thank you.
District Five?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District One?
Yes. All right. Thank you. Okay, now we'll go to item 45. And Supervisor Tucker, I think you pulled that. So if you want to just ask your question or make your statement, and then we can have staff.
Yeah, no, and maybe the staff can speak to it. I think there was some questions about the report, and I think they'll probably echo it. One thing I want to say is that the, there's monthly and quarterly treasury reports that we have, as a board, receive, as all's auditor, controller, CEO, CFO, clerk of the board, that kind of spells out in a lot of detail what we're talking about here. So I think it's important to maybe put the public at ease, and I think you'll do that in your summary, the amount of work and transparency that there is. I think the reports are published on your website as well. So anyways, I'll let you speak to that, and I think it'll alleviate a lot of the concerns.
Good morning, Chair Hall, members of the board. I'm Michelle Bodley, your treasurer, tax collector. The item before you today is the annual resolution to approve our 25-26 investment policy and to renew the delegation of authority to invest to the county treasurer. The main focus of the policy is to provide guidelines for the operation of the investment program and the prudent investment of funds of the Nevada County Treasury in order to provide participants maximum security of funds, liquidity to meet cash flow requirements, and the highest investment return available without risking capital or liquidity. So the investment policy before you today contains no material changes. This is an annual policy that we bring to the board every year. So to address some of the questions we received during public comment, one of my core duties under the law as the county treasurer is to provide monthly and quarterly reports to your board. I report, excuse me, provide the reports to your board, the auditor, our county CFO, and the clerk of the board. The monthly and quarterly treasury reports are also published on our website and available for our public to review. We do have over three years of our monthly treasury reports on our website for the public to review. The reports include our portfolio composition, the market and book value of our assets, our return of assets, our investment purchases, our sales and maturities, our liquidity events, and any realized gains or losses in the treasury pool. I'm very much happy to answer any questions our public may have if they review our reports. We do strive to attend community outreach events to provide information about the treasury pool and the laws that, that we must abide by. It's important to know that the treasury is subject to rigorous auditing standards. Each investment purchase has a detailed record that we provide to our auditor's office. The auditor performs a quarterly cash count of our treasury, and our external auditors perform an annual audit of the treasury cash and investments and our investment policy. The results of our treasury audits can be viewed on our auditor controller's website. And the most recent audit for 23-24 is on the auditor's website, and there were no findings. We strive to, to maintain continuous proactive engagement with our CFO, our county auditor, and all of our pool stakeholders to ensure that we review indicators that might affect the treasury cash flow. I'm very proud to report the portfolio is very strong and performing well. As of yesterday, we have about $325 million invested with a yield of 3.29%, and we have earned over $10.4 million in interest earnings for the pool this year, which is a record for the county. To speak to the treasury oversight committee, so our treasury oversight committee was dissolved in 2008. As mentioned previously, we strive to make our reports available to the public. We're subject to annual audits. And as we know, about 11 of 58 counties do currently operate with a treasury oversight committee. The main functions of a treasury oversight committee is to oversee the policies that guide the investment of public funds. A treasury oversight committee is not designed to be involved in the day-to-day operations of the tax collector, treasurer. A treasury oversight committee would review the investment policy. They would review our annual broker-dealer certifications, and they may call for an enhanced So at this time, I'm happy to answer additional questions.
Okay. Thank you very much, Michelle. Any questions from the board? Two? Lisa? Hardy? Rob? Nope? Okay. Thank you. I'll open it up for public comment on this item. And if callers want to call in, this is the time to do it.
Thank you, Michelle, for that explanation. The reason I asked for this to be polled is that it's a lot of money. The oversight committee was dissolved in 2008 by the Board of Supervisors. And Michelle and Gina are both appointed, and I think that it's important that we consider appointed to their positions. Oh, I thought you shook your head no. Anyhow, they're appointed, and they weren't elected. And I think that, that we need, as a board or a county, consider an oversight committee for at least the term of, of their appointments, if not longer, just for transparency. And I think the fact that it is a lot of money, there should be an annual presentation of the successes or what's not happening. So I would encourage an annual presentation, whether here or at the board workshop, so that there's transparency as to the successes, obvious successes, $10 million that we're all aware of, so that it's transparent. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Any callers on this item, Madam Clerk?
No callers.
Okay. Back to the board, a closed public comment. Any responses or comments from the board?
Well, I just like, so it is transparent. It's, you post this there monthly, correct?
Correct.
And it's on the auditor's website and yours as well?
So on our website, we publish our monthly treasury reports, which outlines all the activity of the treasury pool each month, what purchase we have made, purchases we may have made, maturities, interest earnings. That's available on our website for public review every month. And then on the auditor's website, the annual audit is published, which entails the audit of the treasury cash and investments, and that can be viewed on the public's website as well, on the auditor's website.
Thanks, Michelle. And you send us all a monthly treasury report as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well done.
Okay. No other comments, and I will ask for a motion and a second to approve the resolution approving the treasurer's statement of investment policy and renewing the delegation of authority to the treasurer to invest county funds for the period of one year.
So moved.
Second.
District Five?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we're going to move to item 57, SR 25-1750, the resolution approving the addition of delinquent community development agency assessments onto the 2025-26 secured property tax roll. Matt and Doug, thank you. Why don't we go right to staff discussion? I think what we want to do here is clarify exactly what this is doing and why, and the history of it, and then we'll open it up to public comment. Go ahead. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Hall, members of the Board of Supervisors. Matt Kelly, Director of Code and Cannabis Compliance. So this is a routine item that we, we routinely bring to the board every year. We've done so for about the last 12 years. And what this is, is this is for code compliance costs or costs in processing of a code violation case. This is not for citations themselves, and then these go directly onto the secured property tax roll. This is a routine item that we typically do every, every year.
Good morning, Chair Hall, members of the board. Excuse me. Good morning, Chair Hall, members of the board. Doug Johnson, Deputy County Counsel. Moreover, other counties regularly employ this process. In addition, courts have reviewed this process in depth and found it to be supported by law. The state legislature has authorized counties to collect costs in this way. So this is just a routine item. It's generally been on consent for the last 12 years. So that's why we put it on consent today.
Thank you. And Matt, maybe, can you elaborate a little bit on sort of why people end up on this role? They have code compliance issues, they've been issued notices, they've been contacted. So elaborate on that a little bit, so people understand how this happens.
Absolutely, Chair Hall. So these are all existing code violation cases or cases that have been closed recently. Typically, with a code violation case process, the violation's verified, and then those will send out a violation warning letter. Then if there's no compliance within 30 days, or at least no contact to, to my staff within 30 days, we'll then send out a citation warning letter. And then we'll follow that up every 30 days with either a citation, with a citation until we have compliance or utilize other tools available to us. Each one of those letters does include an appeal right by which somebody who has a code violation case on their property can appeal to a hearing officer. They can also appeal the invoices themselves that come with that, those letters as well. And so all of the folks who are on this, on the list and the recommendation for, to go on the tax roll, these were not appealed. They did not exhaust their appeal rights, or they did, they exhausted their appeal rights through the process. And so these, this is the final step to be able to recover some of the costs for processing a code violation cases so that it's, it's truly not going to the taxpayers, it's for the individual property owners themselves.
Okay. Thank you. Any, my colleagues have any questions, comments?
You mentioned some of the other county, or a number of other counties do this. For the counties that don't employ this, what are some alternative methods to accomplishing the same goal, which is, I guess, not compliance, but paying of these outstanding fees and penalties, I guess, with, other than going on the secured property tax?
Supervisor Tucker, thank you. And this, just to be clear, this is not penalties. This is solely costs of the administrative costs that are, that are spent by the county to process these cases. So that includes staff time investigating the compliance matters, follow-up communication with, with responsible parties, noticing, taking the matter to a hearing if necessary or requested, but it's separate from fines or penalties. Other counties, I mean, the, really, the legislature has prescribed just a couple different pathways. This pathway is one that's regularly employed by other counties. And aside from that, it would be a matter of bringing a civil lawsuit against a responsible party to collect costs of abatement in a code case. So there are a few different penalties, but trying to reduce it to a, to a judgment is one, is one matter, and then the other matter is, is the special assessment on the tax roll. And this is by far the, the more efficient way for the county, for the taxpayers.
Okay. Any other questions? Questions? Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you. We're going to open it up now for public comment on this item?
The other alternatives the county has for collecting is turning into a collection agency. The other, they have, according, I had a conversation with Michelle, and Michelle explained to me that it was under her impression that the county had to exhaust all of its attempts to collect before she would put it on the tax roll. So in a few people's cases on that list, that's, that is, they haven't exhausted yet, but yet they're being put on the list. The other thing that is, is happening is they have, it's my understanding that what can be put on your tax roll lawfully is the cost to actually abate the situation, a tree leaning over someone else's house, or somebody has septic system that's leaking onto the neighbor's property and they don't take care of it. Anything that you guys deem as a health, life, or safety issue, and to have it abated, and then try to collect the cost of the abatement, and then when that fails, then put it on your, that person's tax record. They're using this system now to just simply collect fees. And I think that it's, well, one, I think it's unlawful, and I've explained all my reasons for it. Two, I've put you guys all on notice that now that you understand the lawful reasons for why this is unlawful, you, you can't claim ignorance or being not sued yourselves because it's, you've been put on notice. So this is unlawful. It is not following due process. Due process, this starts through the abatement process, through the administrative hearing process, through notification, through excessive fines that accumulate each day. There's a host of violations of due process and law. And I just wanted, you guys have all my written stuff. I just wanted to say that. And you're on notice, and it's probably going to move to a lawsuit. Thank you.
My name is Paul Gilbert, and I should be no stranger to this board, so hear me well. Today, I'm not just speaking about SR 1750, but about how this board governs. Because how you govern matters just as much as what you pass. This ordinance is unconstitutional, both in what it says and how it's being advanced. It proposes to convert unpaid code violation notices issued administratively without a court into enforceable tax liabilities. This violates due process. It violates Article III. It violates the Seventh Amendment. And under the Supreme Court ruling, SEC versus Jarski, you cannot impose monetary penalties And under the Supreme Court ruling, SEC versus Jarski, you cannot impose monetary penalties tied to private rights through administrative process. California's Constitution says the same. Article 13D requires proper notice, a hearing, and where applicable, a vote by affected property owners. You cannot backdoor foreclosure by calling it routine. This was not an accident. It was a calculated placement of controversial ordinance in a spot designed to avoid public awareness. That's not just tone-deaf governance, it's bad faith. You were not elected to test the limits of government power. You were sworn to uphold the Constitution, to protect the people, and to act only within the lawful authority granted to you. Power does not originate from the Board. It originates from the people, and it is delegated conditionally, not absolutely. When that power is used to bypass fundamental rights, it ceases to be lawful, no matter how many votes are cast. You took an oath. That oath binds you. And that oath does not permit you to convert bureaucratic code violations into property seizures. It is not just about code enforcement. It's about whether this county still honors the limits placed upon it by law, and whether your oath of office still means anything. SR-25-1750 must be withdrawn in full. If you cannot cite the constitutional authority for it, you cannot lawfully enforce it. In addition to my remarks today, I am serving a public records request that seeks all documents, communications, and legal analysis related to this ordinance. Govern yourself accordingly. Thank you.
Any other public comment on this item? Any callers, Madam Clerk?
There is one caller here.
Okay, let's take the caller, and then we'll come back to the Board.
There's always one. Matthew Coulter, calling my Board of Supervisors for Nevada County. And I know that Nevada City, City proper, has lumped their fines and punishment into this, for the county to now take over all the delinquent stuff, and I think, believe it includes sewer water, different things. And if you read the back of the newspaper, you'll see all the land grabs that are going on. And as you well know, I go to court quite a bit, and get to witness the sale of different properties on these courthouse steps. A very sad process, and you can basically see what's going on quite clearly within the county. We've got a huge land grab, basically, let's just title it the New Gold Rush, and the developers that are coming in seem to get preferential treatment on a lot of this stuff. And if you follow the money, and you follow where these things are leading to, it's not a very transparent and proper system for the folks that have worked their whole lives and retired, and have fallen behind on certain things due to the increase of everything in our county. Not to mention that they're paying for services for people that are choosing to abuse drugs to the point of repeated hospital visits, and mental health visits, and police visits, and it's very, very expensive. So, I think it's bad to balance the budget on the back of people that are a little bit behind in their payments to the government. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any more public comment here?
I'm Ray Shipley, in District Five, on the border with District One, in the Jones Ridge Road neighborhood. Mr. Bullock, I'd be happy to take you up on your offer for a face-to-face 15-minute meeting at some point regarding this, and I appreciate the opportunity to make a comment now. I'm following up on my comment that I emailed yesterday pertaining to a current open code violation case on my fully permitted, fully inspected, and currently fully compliant building project. My project first came into noncompliance about six months after Craig Griesbach came onto the job, and he refused to sign off on my inspection. There was a dialogue with Mr. Kelly from yesterday, from last week, over the issue where he said there would be no, nothing I needed to do to correct my code violation, except for complete my building project. But he decided to keep that case open. I do not have any explanation about what the case is. In 2019, there was a grading issue on Jones Ridge Road, a private road with a public right-of-way, a public, non-exclusive, deeded right-of-way on Jones Ridge Road. You may be familiar with it. The code compliance officer, David Kopp, ordered me on the spot to address the grading violation. However, my neighbor, who showed up on my property unannounced, without notice, took full blame and credit for the grading violation. Nevertheless, David Kopp said my code compliance notice of violation would be forthcoming, and still ordered me to do work on the ground in front of Patrick Mason, the fire marshal, deputy fire marshal at the time we had this conversation. So, when that code violation came, it had nothing to do with grading. It was all about times up on my building project. I'm an owner-builder, I have a full-time job, and I made steady progress, as I was required to do, on my building project. There was never any violation noticed on my building project. I was accused several times of building, not in the scope of my drawings, my plans, my approved plans, but Brandon Hazlitt and the inspector Jason Costa were the first.
Thank you. Your time is up. So, Mr. Shipley, this is something we won't be addressing here in public, but you're welcome to both follow-up with staff, or with your supervisor, Supervisor Bullock, afterwards, so.
May I ask one question?
No, this is public comment, and your time is up. But you're, you know, you're welcome to do so after, separately with staff and your supervisor.
Mr. Shipley?
Thank you.
We could have staff follow-up with you directly.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item?
I have a question.
You can make public comment at this point, and we can address questions at the end to staff.
Lily Marie Mora, in District Three. I just had a question. Would, I used to live in Rough and Ready, and we used to have a lot of people who were kind of hoarders, and so, they'd have acres of property with old cars and all of that. Seems like some of this code violation action would be being driven by the new fire safety laws, because, you know, if you have several old cars, and they all start burning up, your neighbors are gonna start burning up. So, I understand his issue's different, but just wondering about the fire regulations with this.
Thank you. So, this is about item 57, which is administrative recovery of costs, so that's a separate item, but we can have staff follow-up with you. All right. I'm gonna close public comment, bring it back to the Board. I'm gonna ask staff, please, to reply to what I understood, the constitutionality of this item, the legality of this item, and the assurance that all other avenues were pursued before it came to a property tax item.
Chair Hall, yes.
If you would. Thank you.
Absolutely, yes. This is a process that's been authorized by the state legislature, and reviewed, and approved by the courts. It's practiced regularly in California. The properties that are on the resolution have all been afforded due process in accordance with our ordinance and with state law. They were provided notice, opportunity to have their case heard, and in most cases, I don't have every case memorized, but I think probably most of them either did not appeal, or have just failed to follow up with the process. So, that's, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Bullock, you had a question?
That answered mine.
Okay. Okay. Any other Board members have questions?
Yeah, just to clear this up a little bit, I'm just looking at the list right now again. These are just the costs that happened from staff. This isn't about the abatement costs, it's not about the work that had to get done. This is different. This is just about the cost with staff.
Correct. These are the actual costs incurred by the county to conduct these code compliance matters. They're defined as administrative costs in the county's ordinance, and that includes everything we mentioned before, investigation, communications, noticing, physical work, if necessary, but no penalties.
Yeah. Question on that. If, for example, if we took an alternative method and did not place them on the secured roll, and those administrative fees had to be covered, would those come out of general fund, out of taxpayer funds?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll just make a comment. As mentioned, you know, one of the remedies would be to turn them over to a collection agency, and one of them would be to turn it over to a collection agency for recovery, but I will tell you, when you use a collection agency, they usually take 40% or 50% of the money that's recovered. So, for us to recoup money to go back into our general fund for services that we have provided, this is probably the most economical way for the county to, that's my assumption. Doug, maybe you can respond to that.
Supervisor, that's correct. The county does have a contract with a collections agency that does take a percentage of any costs or fees recovered, but this is the method that's been laid out by the legislature, by statute, and this is the method that the county follows.
No, so, it's interesting, though, as I went back, there's many resolutions that we've done this numerous times over the years, correct? And I did look back, and I tried to see if there was a lot of public comment during the time, and there wasn't a whole lot. So, just kind of curious if, and the amounts are not very big, the folks are usually, this has been something they've asked to pay over time, right? I'm just curious, can you give us the process that went into it getting to the tax roll?
Yes.
I mean, how long does that take? Just an idea how that all works.
Chair Hall, Supervisor Hook, so, the process is, is that we, just going through the normal code compliance case process, part of our investigation does include staff time and staff costs, which are, on Nevada County Code, 1205220 allows for that. We will, as I talked about earlier, we do send out notice of violation letters, and then, after that part is exhausted, we also do have collections, and so, some of these have gone through our collections agency. They do take a percentage for that process as well. We don't have to send all of them to collections, but we do do that. And then, we also send out 30-day, 60-day, and 90-day intent-to-collect letters on these invoices as well. Those do include appeal rights with them as well, so a property order could appeal that invoice and that code violation case to a hearing officer then as well. And so, then, this is typically the final step in being able to try and recover and collect those costs.
Okay. Thank you. And then, are all these cases closed?
Many of them are not. There are still, a lot of them are still open. Some of them are closed, but we're still trying to bring some of these into compliance.
Any other comments or questions on the Board?
I just got a few comments, not really questions. I think for me, I know the emotions are on high on this issue, and I understand it, because I think it relates to property rights, which I'm very passionate about. I think, Matt, you've got one of the hardest jobs at the county in some ways. Code compliance is so difficult, you're always kind of balancing these different whatever. But, so, I have an appreciation for that. I think this is something that I would, it sounds like, is perhaps legal. The state law allows it, although I don't always think state laws are, every one of them is something we should be trumpeting, but, so, I don't have a problem with this to be one of our methods. I just don't know if it's the best one. And for me, you know, I hear some egregious cases that everybody could hold up as examples, and I'd be like, yes, this, you know, hey, they deserve it. But in looking at the list for this year, and I'm not even talking about anyone in this room, I see some people that I feel like I know to be hardworking, upstanding, law-abiding citizens, some who were my teachers I saw when I was younger, you know, whatever. And some of the amounts were like $144. And for me, so, it's not even the specifics, because everything you said makes sense. For me, it's just the idea that this otherwise law-abiding citizen for $144, granted, they may bear some responsibility in that, and likely do, there's two sides of it, but the fact that they could lose their house going down this road, or their property, I just, I have a hard time with that. So, I'm not disparaging any of your work, or anything that's been said. I just have a hard time balancing that. And I know it was before my time, but I know we've talked about at the workshop, a lot of maybe revamping of the code compliance process and policy, and I think part of that was because, and I think we were gonna focus more on health and safety, I think part of that came out of the, and one of the reasons was because this is, code compliance is such a thorny issue, I think, in some areas. So, I just hesitate, even though I think we're within our rights, the county is, as far as state law, and case law, and the legislature, I would really rather alternatives be pursued. And that's just my opinion, reasonable people can disagree on that. I don't fault you for doing what has been tasked, but I have a hard time supporting it, just knowing that from a property rights standpoint, something as small as $144 could ultimately lead to somebody losing their property. It's hard for me, so.
Thank you. Did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, in recognition of Supervisor Tucker's concerns, I think, and the fact that we are well within our rights, I mean, I would entertain something to table this for a 60-day period, entertain, well, I'm just, I can say that, but, you know, that would be something I would entertain, to see if there's a resolution, but I do think that we're well within our rights, and the process should stand.
Okay. County Council, want to step way in here?
Yeah, and I'll let my deputy correct me if I'm wrong, but I was just speaking with the tax. These go on the roll. They don't lose their house over these, they lose their house over non-payment of their property taxes. These often are only collected once the house is sold, or if it does, if they fail to pay any of their taxes, then we have that lien. This is not a way of taking people's property, and again, we don't usually get them money in the moment. We get them sometimes 10 years, 20 years. We don't confiscate people's property over these kinds of taxes. Confiscation of a property is for failure to pay their property taxes solely, so, and that's a whole process, it's a four-year process. I just don't want a misunderstanding that we are confiscating people's property over code compliance liens.
Thank you for that clarification. Doug, did you also want to say something, weigh in?
No, that's correct, and that's a five-year process. If property taxes go delinquent for five years, then that's when the tax collector can initiate the tax sale process. But again, it's for-
Okay. We need to wrap this up, so go ahead.
Just to clarify, so, if somebody, Joe Citizen, was adamant that they did not commit the violation initially, it sounds like there's some open cases, by this process, that would ultimately go on the tax rolls, and were they to, by way of principle, refuse to pay that portion of it, they would ultimately lose it, right? I get what you're saying. You're saying there's not a chance. So, if the gentleman here never pays that, whatever amount it is, he will never have his property in jeopardy? And I think this speaks, the confusion of it speaks to, I would support a 60-day tabling just to get, I think, some clarification.
Good morning, Chair Hall, members of the Board. Michelle Bodley, your Treasurer, Tax Collector. So, to provide an example, if the resolution were to pass today, and these special assessments were to be added to the tax roll, if the individual property owners did not pay their property taxes with the costs on the 25-26 bill, all the way until 2031- property taxes with the cost on the 2526 bill all the way until 2031, the parcel would be subject to the tax auction for non-payment of taxes, which includes the special assessment on the tax roll.
I have... Yeah, I just quickly, I have a constituent with considerable associated fines levied on their property. That process is long. What's happening today, I had no assumption that it was taking somebody's personal property, although the emotion connected to the levying of these fees associated with these properties, in my mind, we have absolutely no loss in tabling this for 60 days to resolve that. That's my only point that I'm making.
Okay. So I'm hearing two things from the Board. Let's see. We've closed public comment. We're just back to us. I'm hearing, one, perhaps we should take another look at these cases and either between now and January, look at if there's alternative ways to handle this in the future. That's one option I'm hearing. Another option I'm hearing, if it's legal, Kit, I'll look to you, is to table this for 60 days and bring it back at that time. Is that... Would that even be legal?
You can table it. I'm going to look. I believe that they... We lose our opportunity to put them on this tax roll, but I'll let them speak to that.
That's correct, and that would be an auditor question, but I believe that not done before the next fiscal year, then these would not go on this next year's tax roll.
Could they be picked up at a later date to put back on a tax roll if needed?
Supplemental assessment.
Possibly next year's resolution in the same process.
Okay. Okay. So I'm going to first ask, I'm going to see if there's Board direction to... You know, my preference would be to take a look at this in the future and see if there's a better way to address this. Is there a Board... Can we give a direction to do that?
Chair? We do have one caller for public comment.
Okay. That we closed public comment?
We did. We didn't acknowledge the callers.
Okay. Okay. Let's take that. Take a break moment here.
Thank you.
Hello, Board. My name is Erin. I'm in District 5, and I would really just like to get down to the brass tacks. First of all, I would appreciate if Doug could read, or Kit could read, Government Code Section 25845D to the Board. Secondarily, I'm requesting that Doug or Kit or whoever volunteers to read California Constitution, Article 13D, so that we can understand what the actual government code is saying versus what the Constitution is saying. And I will say that the Constitution is the supreme law of our land. It's mandatory and prohibitory, and that means that any legislative enactment that is repugnant to the Constitution is essentially void on its face. So you can't go against what the Constitution outlines for special assessments. So there's a warped language, and I implore you to listen to the reading of the text before you make your decision. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. I think we answered that, but Doug, do you want to, or Kit, say anything more about that one? No?
I'm open to any questions that you may have about that or the Board.
I don't... If you wanted... Do you feel like you answered that issue of constitutionality?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right. Back to the Board. So I did hear a suggestion. Is that a motion to table this for 60 days?
I would make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay. Then let's take a vote.
District 5?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 3?
No.
District 1?
No.
Okay. The motion has been made and passed to table this item for 60 days, so we will not vote on it today. It will come back at another time.
So, Chair Hall, it'd be helpful for the Board to provide staff direction on what they would like us to come back with in 60 days.
Okay. Turn it over to my colleagues who made the motions.
Do you want to go first, Supervisor? I can... I'd like to see just assurance that there was a workout plan in the 60-day period to close open cases and that those have been handled. And also, I'd like a written brief on the con law portion of it with the case law that's been stated here for us today and the caller's comments back. It doesn't have to be in-depth. It doesn't have to be a full legal brief, but a white paper on our understanding of that would suffice for me. And again, I support the process, and I support what you've done to get us here, and I also support burdening those property owners who fail to meet the requirements of the law and making that cost lie squarely on their shoulders and not on the taxpayer. So 100% in support of this 60 days from now, if you can answer those questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
So can we... Supervisor Tucker, do you have additional comments?
Yeah, kind of the same thing. And for me, more clarity on some of the issues we discussed, including the ultimate end result of the property being auctioned off versus not, because it sounds like there were kind of two perspectives. I think they were saying the same thing. And yeah, I think 60 days is just time to get more information, get more input, and see where it goes.
Okay. So in terms of how it shows up on the tax rolls?
Yeah. I mean, my colleagues can chime in. I hesitate to support something like this, so if it were ultimately on the tax rolls, I would still have those issues, but reasonable people can disagree. But I would like clarity on whether that goes on the property tax roll, and if those property taxes are not paid, or at least that portion of it, let's say they pay 150 less because in principle they disagree with it, at the end result is the property being auctioned off, is my understanding, and there was a little...
Okay. So just clarity in terms of the process?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm hearing three things. One, in terms of staff, of how we close out current cases. Two, a legal opinion on the current case law, this process. And then, three, what is the county process in terms of how these get on property tax rolls?
And I think you said it, some alternatives would be part of that process. What it would look like if we didn't go down...
Alternatives of what other counties currently do.
Or, yeah, other methods to collect collections, whatever, and the cost of those.
And then I'd like to get Supervisor Hook's input as well. Yeah, actually, I think that we can do this because it's a transparency for our community. I think that's probably the key to this, where we're working from. But, I mean, basically, it's a lien. And so, I mean, anybody can lien your property if you owe them money for work or different items. HOAs do it. It's not just a county deal. So I think the clarification will be helpful. I think that if we have all this, because I support this as well, you've got to pay your bills, and so that's where I'm at with this. I don't disregard what you've already put through this. I think it's just a matter of being transparent to the rest of the public. So thank you for the work. Okay. Is that clear?
That's clear. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much, Matt and Doug. And we are going to take a very quick five-minute break, bio break, and we'll come back for general public comment. Thank you.
Thanks for everyone's patience this morning. We're now moving into general public comment. I think you all know the drill. I'll just read through some of this. Members of the public shall be allowed to address the board on items not appearing on today's agenda that are of interest to the public and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Speakers are encouraged, but not required, to give their name and district of residence. Please direct your comments to the board, not the audience or staff. And no individual may speak more than once during public comment. We are timing you and giving everyone three minutes. Let's make sure that folks who want to call in are starting to call in. We will get to you. And let's open public comment.
Michael Taylor, District One. I submitted, two weeks ago, I think, week and a half ago, I submitted a request for an item, two items to be put on the agenda today. And then I outlined my legal authority to request that, as well as my legal authority to be given an explanation if it wouldn't be put on the agenda. And the items that I asked to be put on the agenda is a resolution declaring a fiscal emergency in the county. And the reason I was asking for it to be put on the agenda is because the county is spending $24 million more than it's bringing in. You guys do not have a balanced budget. On top of not having a balanced budget, you guys are increasing staff by 28%. You guys are also in a situation that you're only 62.8% covered in your pension funds. That's a quarter billion dollars shortfall, just for Nevada County. This is, you guys are in a fiscal emergency. Not only that, you guys downgrade your credit report, downgraded last year, October, from AA+ to an AA. Putting all of this together, you guys are going to end up paying more for your bonds, your credit rating is going to go down. You guys are not in a situation where we're going to weather this without it getting worse before it gets better. So I think that it's important now to declare a fiscal emergency and deal with trying to increase our normal, our other incomes, taxes, and whatever, to get up to a point that can compensate and cover total financial compensations. As part of that, I also sent in an ordinance for you guys to consider, and that is capping your own salaries at $60,000, which is $20,000 more than you got in 2022. Your guys' salaries are now 150% higher than they were in 2022. That is a significant hit to our financial situation in the county as well. You guys are going to vote today to increase elected officials' total financial compensations. As soon as you do that, you then are voting to increase your own as well. I think it's conflict of interest that you increase somebody else's, and it increases yours. So I think it shouldn't be tied to you guys approving the other six elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a reminder that public comment right now is for items not on the agenda. There will be time to comment on agenda items during those items. Thanks. Come on down.
Good morning. Tom Durkin, District Four. The grand jury recommended a safe camp now for the second time. And as I understand it, the county has to respond to the grand jury report in 90 days. I may be wrong on that, but if you are looking at a safe camp, we at the No Place to Go Project would like to be involved in discussions. We've done a lot of research on this, and we want to work with the county if you can. A safe camp, the only thing worse than a safe camp is no camp. We can't help people if we can't find them. So people need a place to be that's safe, where they can get their lives together. So please consider that. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Callers, Madam Clerk?
There is one caller, Chair.
Okay, bring them in, please. Lorianne, are they? There we go. Go ahead.
There's a beep. Thank you. Matthew Coulter, on general public comment, I'd like to talk about the Dorsey marketplace situation. I understand that they're clearing folks out after the recent fire, but these areas in town that are allowed to fester, knowing that there's 30 people, 20 people, 10 people, five people living in a place that is unsuitable to live in, with open fires and open waste, and just ignoring it because you can't see it real clearly, I guess, unless you look. Right now, there's camps along the sound wall at Dorsey and the freeway. There's camps, because of people being moved out, they're not going to move far, and most of the folks are going to move across Idaho-Maryland Road to Centennial Drive and go into the Rise Gold property, which is burned multiple times, including with the Bennett Fire. Now, that's NCSO jurisdiction, not GVPD. This morning, GVPD was out there because the traffic cameras were vandalized and ruined, so they had to remove those. The amount of crime and just petty things that are going on that make life difficult, or including the ambulance crew that's right there, the homeless show up to their place asking for things, or stealing things. If you go into the camps, you can see so many items that you could tell weren't purchased. Many things were stolen and taken from surrounding properties. So it really affects the surrounding area. So we have sheriff jurisdiction inside Grass Valley, and they don't come inside Grass Valley very often. So something needs to happen where there can be communication that these small pockets that are being utilized for fire and drug activity and theft can be dealt with. And yes, I understand something's being done with Dorsey, but there's multiple other places. And this morning, while I'm listening to your show, and I'll call it a show, is call after call after call on transients. And it just eats up a lot of, got one guy laying in the road with his backpack. It just takes a lot of manpower, and it's costing us a lot of money. But until there's a place where people can be legally, where you can point to it and go, you can go lay down there, they're just going to be laying everywhere and get repeated medical and police calls, and it's just sucking the system dry. And the fires are spread all around us. So I encourage you guys to do something about the ongoing dispersion of the homeless all around town with fires. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments in the board chambers? Okay, we're going to close public comment. Thanks, everyone, for your robust engagement this morning. We love to hear from you. And we are now going to move on to our next item, which is item 81, celebration, the resolution proclaiming the month of June 2025, a celebration of Trails Month. Want to invite down Shavati and your guests. And Supervisor Bullock, would you like to kick us off on this one?
Yeah, thanks. This is a fun one. I know, I'm going to keep it brief. We have a very busy day. This is something near and dear to my heart, and I think the recreation objective has gone a long way to building a kind of connection between the board and the county, our partners who build trails and shepherd trails and protect land and do signs. And we had the entire grant process during the COVID times to help support organizations that would build trails so we could all get out and walk and hike and bike. But Berry Uba Land Trust, I just wanted to call out and say a sincere thank you and just kind of lift your organization up for making Trails Month a huge part of our community. And I went on your website and have also seen all of your eBlast and information we got related to all the things going on. So your Star Hike Challenge and the Cheers piece, and the Art and Nature, and all these different things you're doing all month, which is a whole kind of event planning endeavor in and of itself, so great work doing that. I was in the middle of nowhere and rode past something, I caught, something caught my eye, and anyway, it was one of your stars, and I didn't know about the star challenge, so I looked it up later, but I was like, that's weird, somebody put this out here in the middle of nowhere. And it was kind of fun. Trails in my neighborhood in East County are kind of shepherded with the Truckee Trails Foundation, and Allison Pedley's been a longtime executive director there. Some leadership changes going on, but I just wanted to kind of say a sincere thank you to that organization as well, and our friends with Bonk are here, and we all ride your trails constantly, and have all worked together to try and meet the needs of our community during some really trying times, and also the changes in the federal landscape that support our trail system, which I know our ledge and reg and our support from the Board of Supervisors has made a difference with our congressional representatives who are putting some of our trail projects back into the priority, trying to put them back together and keep them moving. So with that, just a thank you from me, and I just wanted to look forward to hearing from you, and good luck with the rest of the Trails Month.
Thank you very much.
So, good morning, Chair Hall and members of the board. It's my pleasure to introduce a resolution proclaiming June 2025 as celebration of Trails Month in Nevada County. This annual celebration, now in its 11th year, it highlights the essential role our local trails play in community health, recreation, sustainability, and economic vitality. Joining us today are two key leaders from Berry Uba Land Trust, the organization at the heart of this month-long celebration, and a valued partner in trail stewardship across our region. Please welcome Erin Tarr, Executive Director, and Annette Miller, Communications Manager of Berry Uba Land Trust. We also have our trail steward partners today, right behind us, from Tahoe National Forest, Truckee Trails Foundation, Gold Country Trails Council, bicyclists of Nevada County, and online, we have Truckee Donner Land Trust. Erin and Annette are here to share a few words about this year's programming and a broader vision BYLT brings to trail connectivity and community engagement in Nevada County. Thank you. I'll hand it over to Erin.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Hall and Supervisors, for having us here and doing this proclamation again. It's really exciting to see the collaboration that's been happening over the last few years with the county and with trails and recreation. So we couldn't thank you more. It seems like a really harmonious time. People are really coming together, understanding how important outdoor recreation is for physical and mental health, as well as for economic viability and tourism. So I'm going to do a quick review of BYLT. Most of you know us well. Rob, I think you're the first, you know, we need to meet with you more. But here's a quick overview of BYLT, and then I'm going to pass it over to Annette to talk about all of our celebration of trails programming. So Berry Uba Land Trust, we're a nonprofit. We've been around since 1990. We save land, we build trails, and we connect people with nature in our community. We work in eastern Yuba and western Nevada counties. We've protected over 26,000 acres of land. A lot of that is open to the public with trails and recreation. We've also built over 50 miles of trail locally and helped maintain trails with the work of all of our awesome partners here, and then work to connect people with nature. So not only through our trails, but through these awesome events that we're putting on. And Supervisor Bullock mentioned this, but the incredible partnership and support the county gave, especially through the COVID times, we were really proud to not close any of our public preserves during that time. The use just increased, and we saw how much people needed the outdoors. So we were able to partner with the county on some really amazing projects through their outdoor visitor safety program. One of them was the Adam Ryan Preserve parking lot down in Alta Sierra. Being able to expand that, it was max capacity that whole time, and now we have a beautiful parking lot. Also, the recreational signage grant that we got to give people more navigation help out there and just help people be able to find these trails. And then we also got a grant for our trail stewardship and outreach work. So, you know, not only are we helping to build these trails, we have that long-term responsibility of stewardship and maintenance to keep them open. And what we're all here for today is the Pines to Mines Trail Project. So luckily, we went a little late because now we're all here. We have a meeting, actually, after this. But Pines to Mines is one of the most epic trail projects, I think, that we've ever been a part of. And this huge coalition of partners that's working to make this happen is really amazing for our community. So really excited about where we're at. We're just looking for the funding at this point to be able to build these. So you can see on the map, these eight missing links. So we've broken them up into sections. We're looking for funding. There's actually going to be a groundbreaking on Section 3 this summer. There is some funding that has been raised already through the partners. So again, just want to call out everybody that's here, Truckee Trails Foundation, Truckee Donner Land Trust, Bonk, the Gold Country Trails Foundation, and the Forest Service, and of course, the county for helping with this project, making it a reality. And this is what it's going to be. See, these are some of the places that we're going to be building this trail and some of the views that you're going to have. So there's about 22, 23 miles of unbuilt trail. It's going to be open to hikers, to bikers, and to equestrians. So really, really excited about the future. And then another big recreation focus that we have right now is at our Wildflower Ridge Preserve. So this is in Supervisor Swarthouse District, just outside Grass Valley. We are creating a community nature hub out here. So the ecology on this site, the location of this site, it really makes it this perfect place to be able to educate, collaborate, and inspire with the community for many generations to come. So really excited about what's happening out there. Next slide. This map just shows where, it's right by Twin Cities Church there in Grass Valley, but the connectivity with trails already coming there, all the schools that have access there. So really excited about this community nature hub project. And the Reckon Resilience Master Plan, of course. So we were thrilled to be a part of this, helping to guide some of the priorities, and now on the back end, really seeing how the county is investing and moving these priorities forward. We're helping with the Wayfinding Sinage Project, and then we also got funding for Eric Marquess, for our recreation manager, and the county is also having him as their recreation associate. So that's a little overview of what we're doing, and I'm going to pass it to Annette.
Thank you, Erin. Thank you, everyone, for having me. Thank you to the Supervisors for recognizing how important trails are in our community, not just to bring people to nature, but to connect people to each other. So that's what I'm kind of here to talk about right now, is to really show appreciation for our entire community, who has come together to support the work we do and actually be the work that we do. A big part of our organization is working with the community to build trails, to talk about trails, to get people to get out and experience nature, and help those who perhaps wouldn't engage in that way. So one thing we are working on is opportunities for people to get involved through volunteer work, through building trails, supporting the trail work that we do in general, to come together, in community, to feel a part and have a stake in the community and nature. We do that through many opportunities, both in, like during the day, in the evenings, opportunities to not just volunteer, but then to socialize as well. And another big part of what we do is working with the next generation of conservationists and naturalists, through the schools, through other school programs, youth programs, to connect these youth to nature. We do, go to the next slide. These are just a list of some of the schools and youth groups that we've worked with in the last year. All the work that we do with them, it comes with no fee. We provide staffing, curriculum, all kinds of just events and opportunities for youth to get out and enjoy nature and learn. And then another way that we connect to the community is through all of our events. And as Supervisor Bullock mentioned, this is a celebration of Trails Month, so it's a month-long celebration of all their trails in our community, in Nevada County, in Yuba County. And we have not only the Summer Star Hike Challenge, that's 24 stars on 24 trails, and over 250 people out there registered to go find these stars, but we have, we got a grant from Parks California to do arts and nature programming. We are one of only 36 organizations in all of California to get this grant. So we've been able to put arts in nature, work with local artists, pay local artists to get out there and do art, another opportunity for people to engage that way. And we have a wonderful, we've really been supported by the city of Nevada City. We have a wonderful street party happening on Saturday, free to the public. We're just going to engage with, a lot of our partners are sitting here, so people can just meet with each other, hang out, and understand the work we're doing, and just be together in community, which is really what we're all about. So thank you.
Great. Is that your presentation, Shavati? Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. You have such a great, positive, lovely, collaborative effort around nature. Feeds my soul. Let's see if I have any questions or comments from the board. I'll start with you, Sue.
No questions particularly, just what a great presentation and thanks for what you do. I'm really excited to see Pines to Mine. That's a huge undertaking, so I know three's in the middle of the trail, but we'll keep digging for how that's all going to figure out. I think it's very exciting, very exciting. So congratulations for all the work you guys do.
Yes, I would echo that. Thank you for all the work that you do, and I'm really excited about the Wildflower Ridge Project. I think that is going to be an amazing amenity for our community, especially the educational component, and that you're working with all the schools and the kids. So keep up the good work.
Yeah, just thank you. Thanks for doing it all. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for, I love how you've melded together so many things, trails, land preservation, education, really to ensure that there is access to the public, to our public lands, and to teach children early how to engage with nature and give them opportunities, and then these phenomenal trails that we're all going to want to get out and use one way or another. So, and I'm proud of the county that we've partnered with all of you, so that this is just truly collaborative effort, and wish the best for all of these projects. So let's open it up to public comment at this point.
Michael Taylor, District One. I too, thank you guys, and I think that the way the board and the county staff and everybody has worked together to get these trails done over a very long period of time, I'm amazed that, looking back 10 years ago, how it started and where we are today with these trails. And I think economically, this is a huge benefit to the county. I think that once it becomes known statewide, that people come up here, camp and ride bikes from south to Truckee, I think it's going to be economically a huge benefit for the county. And I think the fact that they can camp along the way with our shortage in housing, that this is a great place to invest and to encourage economically. All right, thank you.
Thanks. Do we have any callers?
Yes, Chair, we have one caller.
Hi, Board of Supervisors, Matthew Coulter, Nevada County. I love that Berry Uba Land Trust trails, use them quite frequently, and enjoy them very much. I'm a little worried about the Pines to Mines being that it's such a far distance for medical rescues. Right now, there's a medical rescue underneath the bridge at the South Yuba River, again. Someone fell, they're not in the water, they just fell. But these calls take a lot of manpower and a lot of time. So if someone's midway on that trail, and they have an accident, and they need a response, it's pretty much going to be a helicopter if one's available, or several hours in by fire units, and multiple hours back out, and it just sucks up a lot of resources. As well as there being, I think it's been mentioned already along the way as I follow these meetings, about the Pines to Mines, about- these meetings, about the Pines to Mines, about helicopter landing pads placed along the trail, or evac specifically, because of its remoteness. I've never heard someone use the term "a beautiful parking lot," but I'll take it for what it's worth. I'd like you guys to go look at the parking lot being made on the side of Sugar Love Mountain on Coyote Street, and that that's a really aggressive and overkill to the environment. I also like you to look at the parking lot that's being put in at the corner of, oh God, it's been renamed Central Avenue, I think? Center Avenue, which was set in way by Idaho, Maryland at the corner there, and how they punched through the creek with equipment with no regard for the environment. And that's what I'm speaking to, is the environment. I also have a question about the Pioneer Trail. Has it ever been connected since the Highway 20 widening realignment project, when they chopped the big section out? Those are just my one question. Thank you, I'd love to hear the answer to that. Thank you.
Thank you. In a moment. Any other public comment on this? Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. Yeah, Erin, go ahead, and we want to address that question.
Well, I'm looking at Joe Chavez from the Forest Service, but I believe it is being worked on actively.
Yeah. The half has been done, the next half will probably be this fall.
You can come up to the mic, or you can repeat that.
Hi, I'm Joe Chavez, Tahoe National Forest Trails Program Manager. The section that was disconnected by White Cloud has now been reconnected. That part's been finished. The part over by Lowell Hill is being started to be worked on by Bonk, and probably plans to finish that would be in this fall and next summer.
Fantastic. All right. Okay, I think we closed public comment, back to the board. Any final comments, questions?
Yeah, I almost forgot to say, I love how you brought all this with agriculture, and you had the goats out at Wildlife. That was so fun. It wasn't fun just with the wonderful work it did on the ground, but I think the public had so much fun with the goats out there. So I just wanted to highlight that. That was a great part of the activity, bringing that preserve back to the beautiful place it is right now with the flowers. Lots of work still to be done, but it's pretty exciting. So thanks for integrating that into the community as well.
Okay, what we're gonna do is we're gonna take a vote, and then we want all of you involved in this trail's work to come down front, and we're gonna take a picture together, all right? So let's, I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the resolution proclaiming the month of June 2025 as celebration of Trails Month. So moved.
Second.
District 5.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
District 4.
Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
District 1.
Yes. Wonderful. Thank you for the great presentation. Let's come on down for a photo. One of these days, I'll get back out there on those trails. Okay, we are, see, give me a minute. We're now gonna be moving into Items 82 through 88. Allison will introduce, and Erin Mettler will provide a very brief presentation. This is our budget item, which is coming back to the board for a second time. It came to the board once previously, and this is the second reading, basically. Just for information for the public, after the presentation, we will have board questions, and then we will go to the public for public comment all at once on all the items. So there'll be one public comment for all of the items on this, 82 through 88. And then we'll close public comment and come back to the board, have further discussion, and then we'll vote on each, we'll have to vote on each resolution separately. Okay? Any questions on that? Okay. All right, then I'll turn it over to you.
Well, that was a perfect introduction. No further information's needed. And so Erin Mettler, our Deputy CEO, Chief Fiscal Officer, will go ahead and proceed with the presentation. Thank you, Erin.
Yes, thank you, Allison. Good morning, Chair, Supervisors. Pleased to be back here today to introduce the final opportunity for public comment on our proposed fiscal year 2025-2026 budget for Nevada County. Since the public hearing on June 10th, we have increased our total outreach statistics by about 1,000, to over 6,000 views on social media of our outreach, as well as received two additional public comments. I do have a few additional contextual comments on the documents before you, and then happy to answer questions. So first off, the county budget, just a reminder, is a planning document. It's used as a framework from which the county conducts its financial activities for the upcoming year, which in Nevada County starts July 1st and ends June 30th. The timing of this fiscal year is consistent across many municipalities, and by virtue of it spanning just 12 months, the budget is a plan that needs to reflect the fact that many projects do span that July 1, June 30th timeframe. The mechanism used to accommodate for those projects to continue to move forward without delay is the use of fund balance in a proposed budget. The funds are accounted for in our annual comprehensive financial report, which is submitted to the State Controller's Office and is a publicly available document to see exactly where funds were spent during the fiscal year. In addition, because the budget is a framework, the adoption of this document does not also authorize expenditures through specific contracts or purchasing agreements. Those come before the board separately in staff reports throughout the year. You just saw about 75 of them this morning in your consent calendar. It is by those individual staff reports that we receive authorization from the board to spend this money that's part of this overarching plan for 12 months. One of the other things I wanted to say was Nevada County employs a set of budget policies which guide our spending and our requests for changes. And so among those policies are tools for us to manage the budget throughout that 12-month period, some of which include a vacancy review upon a position becoming vacant through employee separation or retirement. That request to fill the position goes through a series of reviews, including at the CEO office, to ensure that the fiscal viability of the position is still intact and has not changed, to ensure that the need for that position to be filled is also still existing. And also in consideration of what else is going on throughout the county, if we have opportunities where in one department we are seeing a shrinking of revenue or an elimination of grant funding, and there's a position attached, we will look to that qualification to see if we can continue to support that employee in a different position in another department. And we do that through vacancy review, because in the CEO's office is where we have that kind of full picture of what's going on throughout the county. There is also a policy on the use of fund balance and the reserve funds for emergency and one-time uses. It prescribes how and when we use fund balance in our programming. It includes provision for fund balance to be used for one-time uses and not to support ongoing expenses. And also talks about where we have assignments of the general fund, fund balance, that are attached to specific programs that the board has given direction to provide financial support to. In addition, there have been two corrections made to the proposed budget that you saw on June 10th. One of them is Section 1, the executive summary. We modified Page 1-7 to reflect an accurate description of the county pension outlook, and then also to reflect that we are incorporating plans for a long-term funding plan related to our pension obligation that will come back before the board this fall. In addition, Section 5, which is the proposed resolutions, we had changed the staffing resolution to reflect a revision on the total number of proposed staffing count. That proposed resolution is before you today in a separate staff item, and we reduced the number of positions by one with that correction. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. Supervisor Swarthouse. Supervisor Hook. Supervisor Bullock. Supervisor Tucker. Okay, we'll go to public comment. And folks who want to call in should be calling in now. Any public comment in the chambers?
Michael Taylor, District 1. I'll keep it short. I think offsetting the projected income of $396 million with one-time balances, one-time balances, to balance the budget is irresponsible. I think that we're $24 million over, outside of being balanced. I realize that legally, you guys can say it's a balanced budget, but using $24 million to make the budget balanced and to add, I think, 28.5 new employees that are gonna be carried on for years, is, it's an irresponsible approach, and it's not a balanced budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment in the room?
Hi, my name is Lily Marie Mora, and I reside in District 3. This, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. It just makes me nervous. Anyway, this is to the Chairman, Heidi Hall, and members of the Board of Supervisors, Allison Lehman, Nevada County CEO, Erin Mettler, Nevada County CFO, and all the executive staff. My public argument is obviously regarding the budget. First, I wanted to thank all of you for your incredible work you have done to put this budget together, and also for using the Nevada County Newsletter, social media, and local media, and special meetings to help the public understand the complexity of the budget process, and the services that it funds to support our county and our economy. Second, I respectfully ask for all of you to consider a COLA freeze for the Board of Supervisors and the executives, starting now with this current budget. I fear that the physical, federal and state budgets and the economy will be in more dire straits next year, and we will face even more difficult decisions. These use, these COLA salary freezes to signal to the public that you know that many of the average households in Nevada County are struggling financially. Hear their concerns, and let them know you share their fears and pain in these challenging times. Yes, I am concerned about the use of the reserve or funding balances, as they're called. I understand that many of them are used to match federal project, or one-time projects, and that obviously we need to hire staff to complete those projects. But I'm also concerned about the outstanding bond debt that's coming available, and also the unfunding pension liabilities. But I want to end with the government finance officers' recognition of Nevada County with Bex practices awards for the past nine years and our credit rating. We know that we have the greatest administration working for us, and we want to keep you here. And thank you very much for this time to address these issues with this present fiscal administration's challenges. Thank you.
Thank you, Lily Marie. Well done. Any callers?
No callers, Chair.
Any additional comments in the board? Chambers? Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. I think Erin, Lily Marie acknowledged that we're using the fund balances to help, but do you want to maybe say a little bit more about how we're aware of and preparing for any potential future fiscal emergencies?
So as part of our budget proposal, we are planning on what is known, which isn't a whole lot right now. I think I talked about that a little bit more in depth on June 10th. There are some threats out there because the federal budget has not been set yet, nor has the state budget. And so we are monitoring those threats. We do have contingency plans outside of our budget proposal that will be enacted should wide swaths of funding not come through, should program be eliminated, or program requirements be changed. We're well-prepared to position ourselves with not overextending as a result of that. And so that could look like many, many different things, depending on what actually does transpire. When it does impact positions and staffing, we would use our vacancy review process as one way to mitigate the loss of funding. We also do have significant fund balance available to smooth out any direct impact that is immediate and cannot be adjusted without a couple months of time to figure out a plan. However, I'm confident that our fiscal staff are well-aware and really paying attention closely to their budgets, and not making sure that we are overextending with contracts that are requesting approval at this time. All of our contracts have language in them that should funding change midstream. The county has the ability to either amend the contract and reduce it, or terminate it wholly with 30 days' notice. All the clauses are in those contracts, in addition. I feel like we are as prepared as we can be for the unknown ahead of us. We recognize it is challenging to look at an increased budget and support it in this way. However, we do have significant services that we need to provide, that we're obligated to provide to our residents. In addition, we have some significant capital projects going on right now that do require ongoing funding to complete.
Thank you so much, Erin, for all your good work to make sure we're stable and prepared. And I will just reiterate that we have done everything we can, acknowledge the public's concerns and fears about what's happening at the federal level, and the fact we don't have a state budget yet either, and that we are aware and tracking that, as Erin says, and that the board can at any time request that pieces of the budget come back to us to be reevaluated. So we do have that ability. At this point, I'll turn it over to my colleagues for any questions or comments.
Yeah, thank you, Erin. I don't have any questions related to the material here. I think the budget workshop was great. I had my questions answered there. There's also a follow-up memo that you've published for us, clarifying some of the details related to the questions that came up in the hearing, so thank you for doing that. Just wanted to thank the Budget Subcommittee. I know, I don't know, three weeks, it's two weeks, it's a lot of work. You're in a windowless cubicle for a long time, talking about spreadsheets and numbers, and so I just appreciate the work you put into making this year's budget work. I think it was a little bit more difficult than previous years, and I sat on the Budget Subcommittee for the last two years, and I think it was a lot of work this year. So thanks for bringing it in whole in this format that makes it so easy for us. I support what's here, and I have no questions.
Supervisor Tucker? Yeah, thanks, Erin, for all the reporting and all your work, and all the staff as well. I think you guys do a great job and are very competent following what you're tasked with. And I say that because I feel like, as we've heard from the federal and state level, the challenges, the uncertainty, and then even, I guess ultimately, it's us that needs to task you with the direction of the ship. I do have one particular question. It's been brought up that we have a balanced budget, which I love, and I know, I think we do a much better job than a lot of counties. But can you speak just briefly to that $415,000, I mean, $415 million budget versus the $391 million in revenues? And I wouldn't call that a deficit, and the reason being, people have brought up that some of that is one-time revenues, or, yeah, I guess revenues, but also some of those expenses are one-time as well, right? So it's not, you kind of have to compare apples to apples. So yes, it may be true that some of those are one-time revenues that are being used, those are also one-time expenses. So in that regard, the budget, I would consider it balanced, if we take a snapshot of right now. Would you agree with that?
Yes. Yes, I would agree with that. You're correct in your assessment. There is a detail, albeit it's a little buried in the budget document itself. Again, 700 pages of really detailed information. You can identify the capital expenses in a particular account item throughout the budget, throughout the departments. And those are typically your one-time expenses that are either the purchase of a specific asset or the building of a capital project.
And I dream about these numbers, so I've seen what you're referring to. The, so for example, if there was a bridge project for $20 million, that would be one-time $20 million expense, but there may be revenues that were also earmarked for that, for lack of a better word, either grants or federal funding or whatever. So there's one time, you can't just take the one time when talking about a balanced budget. So anyways, I appreciate you making those revisions I talked about. I won't talk about the unfunded pension liabilities going forward because I think I expressed my concerns last time, which I still have those concerns. But I'm glad to see that, or hear that we're going to maybe address some of those or at least formulate a more formal plan, respond to the grand jury reports. My, my concern still with this, and like I said, it's not specific to you, it's what's tasked, is I look at positive or negative occurrences, for lack of a better term, and I'm looking at the trend. And when I look at the trend, to me, pretty much every occurrence, general occurrence seems negative to the untrained eye. Our expenses are up. Now granted, our revenues are up too, but revenues are really taxpayer dollars ultimately, whether federal, state, or local. So I don't know if that's necessarily a good thing as opposed to private sector. It's a good thing to have more revenues. Our employees are up, I think from like 800, 10 years ago, I'm just estimating, to close to 1,000 now. Our unfunded pension liability continues to climb. It's at 62 now, it was 68 a couple years ago. So that's where I'm still, you know, it's hard to pin down. I understand staff and you and everybody is doing a great job as best you can to be as efficient as possible, I hope. I just, these upward trends, they're all negative to me. And that's where I have a problem looking long-term. And I think, and to sum it up, I think when we look at like the increase in employees, and I know we can talk about each employee and how important it is, the new employees I'm talking about, the 24 that we've added and the hundreds we've added since 2013. I don't know if myself or the public sees a correlating interest in service from the county. I just, I don't. And that's not, I think our staff is awesome and I'm not suggesting that we downsize, but I think adding additional 24 employees is one of those trends for me that's hard. So yeah, not really a question there. I just wanted to kind of reiterate my overall concerns, not about the job you guys are doing, but just the direction we're heading. And it's, it's hard for me to, I just have concerns going forward, not just the pension, unfunded pension liability that I talked about last year, or last meeting, but all these other factors. That's all I'll say.
Erin or Allison, did you want to respond to that?
So the county's in a strong fiscal position and I appreciate those indicators that you brought up. There's a couple of things that haven't been mentioned that's important to note. One, the state continues to realign programs. And what that means is that you take state functions, realign it to county, then the county is then responsible providing those services. So when you do see an uptick in staffing, there's a correlation to that. Also, we are, have lower staff. If you look back in terms of a 15, 18-year trend period, we have less staff now than we did in 2007. And so we could show that. Also, it's important to note in terms of the increase of revenues, your example, the bridge project is a perfect one. That's additional $24 million of federal funds that come down to support bridge projects that we've been working on for five years. So you're definitely going to see the growth in terms of correlation of like grants and funding that come down. This is an important discussion. We're following the direction of the Board of Supervisors in terms of community building, programs, services, and our obligation to state and federal mandates. And so if we'd like to bring these items back to the board, we're happy to. And these are really important discussions we could also have at the board workshop.
Thank you. Supervisor Hook?
I don't have any real questions. I mean, I understand what Supervisor Tucker is bringing forward, but yet I think the management that we've done, and I just think there's different stories to unfunded liability for one of those things. I think there's going to be some changes in the next few years as you watch. We're, there's always ebbs and flows to it. And I'm always challenged with who handles that, not the county, but at the CalPERS level. And so I think we're doing a good job. I see, I have counties that they bonded it out and now they're paying two payments. And so I think we're doing well within our direction in that. And then I look at staffing. This county produces a lot. And we have a lot of unfunded mandates that come in and staffing is still even, they're, they meet their capacity at a lot of places already. So I don't, I mean, I get, I hear this. I think that you, our, our budget, folks did a great job. Heidi and Lisa, it's a job, Heidi, we've all been on it. Is, there's a lot of hard things. I look at all these departments that all were asked to do a, you know, let's cut back in your departments. And I think everybody did that job with grace because it's hard to do. Everything you do, you lose a little, right? So, I don't know, I still think we're very physically responsible and I am in support of this myself. So thank you for the presentation again. And thank you for the, the new memo that you've changed in the budget with the summary. I think that met those questions that we had last meeting. So I'm good to go.
Supervisor Swarthout?
Thank you, thank you Erin. I think first and foremost, I want to thank all of the people who are involved in this. It's not just our finance team. Every single department in the county has a budget and they work for months and months internally to come to, you know, figuring out what their needs are. And then they work for continual months with our budget staff to make sure that everybody is in alignment with the goals and objectives of the county and that we are fiscally responsible. And I will say that I struggle also with adding staff, but after being part of the Budget Subcommittee and listening to the justification from each department that came in that got additional staff, I'm going to guess that there was requests for probably three or four times as much. Staffing is what we added. There's, they probably came in with over 100 positions and we funded 24, I think. And some of those are funded through additional realignment, so it's not general fund money. So it's a complicated, arduous process. I respect everybody who's involved. I didn't, I didn't agree with everything, but you know, we are a democracy and we get to vote on, you know, how, how it all works. But overall, I'm satisfied with the work that we've done. The other thing that I think is important to understand is that our staff keeps such a great eye on what is happening, both locally and at the state and federal level, that we have a pretty easy ability to come back and make adjustments to this as we move forward to find out what, what is going to happen. So just because we have this budget, it doesn't mean that it is set in stone. There could be adjustments if necessary and we have the ability to make those adjustments through our budget process. So I do, I support what's been proposed here. And again, thank you for the work that you're doing.
Great.
And I want to just echo all those thanks to everyone who worked on this for a year, right? We start the new budget process again in a few weeks. So it's a lot of work. Also want to acknowledge that, you know, this is actually the county work that we are mandated to do and what we choose to do on top of that. Much of it is coming from the state and the feds. Some of it's coming from taxes. It is a big part of our economy here. So the, all those contracts that we fund to do the work that we're mandated to do, we're supporting the nonprofits out there just as they're doing the work we ask them to do. So the cut, some of the cuts that we've seen already coming down, staff has done a tremendous job of looking at how they can ratchet down the things that we are not able to support anymore. So we don't see this sudden cutoff which would impact nonprofits and our economy as a whole. And we're going to be working to do that as well as cuts come down, see how we can soften the blow at the county level. And then if we need to come back to the board to do more, we will do that as well. Just want to acknowledge that, you know, the very thoughtful, strategic approach we take, taking into account all of our constituents and the economy as a whole and the job that we have to do here as a county. Thank you very much for staff. So now we come to the vote.
Can I ask one procedural question?
Sure.
And this might be for Allison. 85, I know all of these are related to the 25, 26 budget that we're about to vote on, all these other resolutions. Number 85 references 24, 25. Is that directly tied to the upcoming budget or is it an adjustment to reflect last year's budget?
It's an adjustment of the current year budget fund balance assignments. And so what we do within those assignments, again, those are tied to specific projects or specific board-directed activities. We've been adjusting those balances in the current fiscal year. And so it does tie into the proposed budget in that those fund balances need to be at these specific levels in order to flow through to the budget request.
Okay. I hope I don't appear inconsistent as we go through knowing that the final budget one is at the end and some of the other ones are directly related to it. But it's okay. Thanks.
Okay, I'm looking for, oh, we need, we did, didn't we do public comment? We did public comment already. Yeah, thanks. Okay, so I am looking for a motion and a second on the resolution approving the Nevada County appropriations limitation for fiscal year 25, 26 and the amount of $105,154,052.
So moved.
I need a second. Thank you.
District Five?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District One?
Yes. Okay, I need a motion and a second for the resolution adopting the authorized personnel staffing resolution for fiscal year 25, 26 and rescinding Resolution 24, 353 as amended effective July 1, 2025.
So moved.
Second. District Five?
Yes.
District Two?
No.
District Four?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District One?
Yes. Thank you. Now I'm looking for a motion and a second for the resolution adopting the authorized personnel salary resolution for fiscal year 25, 26 and rescinding Resolution 24, 354 as amended effective for the first full pay period of fiscal year 25, 26.
So moved.
Second. District Five?
Yes.
District Two?
No.
District Four?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District One?
Yes. Onto the next one. Resolution adjusting budget commitments and assignments for 24, 25 fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
District Five?
Yes.
District Two?
No.
District Four?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District One?
Yes. And looking motion and a second for resolution adopting final budget commitments and assignments for the 25, 26 fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
District Five?
Yes.
District Two?
No.
District Four?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District One?
Yes. Motion and a second for resolution confirmation allocation of Prop 172 Public Safety Revenues for fiscal year 25, 26.
So moved.
Second.
District Five?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District One?
Yes. And finally, a resolution adopting the Nevada County fiscal year 25, 26 budget totaling $415,450,064. Motion and a second please.
So moved.
Second.
District Five?
Yes.
District Two?
No.
District Four?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District One?
Yes. Okay, thank you so much Erin and team. The budget has been adopted. Woo-hoo, we're ready to go for 25, 26.
And we still have the sanitation district budget.
Yes, we do. One more budget. Okay, we're going to now, we're behind the time. I apologize for that. One more budget. Ressessing the Board of Supervisors and convening as the Nevada County Sanitation District Number One Board of Directors. First, we have a consent calendar. Item 89. Is there any public comment on item 89? Are there callers?
No callers.
Thank you. Closing public comment. Any board member wish to pull anything? I'd like to call for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
District Five?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District One?
Yes, thank you. And then we're now on to sanitation district department matters. Number 90, resolution adopting the fiscal year 25, 26 Nevada County Sanitation District Number One Labor Risk Management Reserve Shared Operation Maintenance, Capital Acquisition and Improvement Budgets for all of the zones. Allison, did you want to say anything?
Erin will provide a brief comment and then we'll turn it over to the board.
Yes, thank you Allison. Aaron Mettler, Deputy County Executive Officer, Chief Fiscal Officer. The sanitation district as proposed on June 10th has no changes. It is the same as presented.
Okay, thank you. Any board questions? Any public comment? Any callers?
No callers.
Closing public comment?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second?
District Five?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District One?
Yes. And I think I did public comment already. General public comment also? Any general public comment on the sanitation district? Any callers?
No calls.
Okay, closing public comment. And adjourning as the Nevada County Sanitation District Number One Board of Directors and reconvening as the Nevada County Board of Supervisors. Okay, we're on to our public hearing on the Gableman Project. Is everybody okay moving forward without a break here? Because we're pretty behind. Okay, all right. So this is a public hearing. Welcome down Brian and Zachary. Let me look, I have special instructions for this one, so give me a moment. All right. So the Planning Department will go ahead and present this item.
Thank you Chair Hall. Good morning supervisors. With me is Zachary Rubel, who is an Associate Planner in our office and working on this project. And he'll give you the staff report. And we'll be happy to answer any questions after our report. Zachary?
Good morning and thank you all for being here today. As Brian mentioned, my name is Zachary Rubel. I'm an Associate Planner here at Nevada County and I am the project planner for the Gableman Project here in front of you today. So the project parcel is approximately 21.41 acres in size and it's located at 12100 Scenic Drive in unincorporated Nevada City and is approximately 1.8 miles southeast of downtown North San Juan and approximately 6.8 miles northwest of downtown Nevada City. The project parcel is accessed via Scenic Drive from Tyler Foot Crossing Road approximately 2.2 miles northeast of State Highway 49. The project site is located in a rural area and a number of the surrounding parcels are developed with residential, rural, and accessory uses. And the parcels to the north are mostly undeveloped. In November of 1977, the original tentative parcel map was approved and recorded in Book 12 of Parcel Maps at page 33, which created the original subject parcel. In July of 2020, the Nevada County Planning Department approved a steep slopes management plan for the proposed grading of an access road and commercial cannabis cultivation area within 30% slopes associated with a commercial cannabis project, which has since been withdrawn in order to move forward with this current project. A pre-application review letter from the Planning Department was completed on July 13th of 2023, which provided information regarding the feasibility of the current project. Within the pre-application review letter, the Planning Department indicated that there were concerns that a general plan amendment, a rezone, and a tentative parcel map may not be compatible with the surrounding zoning and land use designation and that the Planning Department would be unlikely to support the general plan amendment, rezone, and tentative parcel map. The project parcel is currently zoned Ag 20, which is general agricultural with a minimum parcel size of 20 acres and has a rural with a minimum parcel size of 20 acres general plan designation. And the project parcel is directly bordered by five parcels zoned Ag 20 to the north, east, and west that are all of relatively the same size and configuration. east, and west that are all of relatively the same size and configuration, with numerous parcels further north, east, and west that are of the same size and configuration or larger than the project parcel. And there are three parcels zoned directly to the south that are Ag 10. On the project parcel, there is currently an existing single-family residence, a garage, a detached residential accessory structure. There are two private wells, onsite septic, and PG&E for electricity on the subject parcel. The planning commission found that the project is not consistent with the findings required to be made to support approval for the proposed project. The planning commission found that the proposed project is not consistent with the first required finding, which requires that the amendment be consistent with the goals, objectives, policies, and implementation measures of the general plan, because the proposed change in the general plan designation would create an inconsistency with the general surrounding parcels and has the potential to set a precedence for the surrounding parcels to the east, west, and north to modify the general plan designations as well, which has the potential to significantly alter the existing character of the neighborhood and increase the overall density of those areas if the surrounding parcels were to apply to achieve the same result as the proposed. The planning commission found that the proposed project is not consistent with the second required finding, which requires that the proposed amendment not be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience, or welfare of the county, and found that the proposed project has the potential to adversely impact the health, safety, convenience, and welfare of the county, because the project parcel is in a remote area and has challenging topography. It would increase the density in the area that is designated as very high fire severity, and it's located on a dead-end road where evacuation capabilities in case of a natural disaster have not been improved but could potentially be further negatively impacted as a part of the proposed project. The planning commission also found that the proposed project is not consistent with the third and final required finding, which requires that the project site be physically suitable for the proposed project and the requested general plan designation and anticipated land use developments. Factors considered to evaluate suitability included access, compatibility with nearby land uses, and presence of resources and constraints as found in the resource standards. Due to the fact that the proposed project would have a very minor impact on the ability to provide additional property taxes, sales taxes, and other discretionary revenues due to only one additional parcel being created, and that would only allow for one additional single-family residence, there would be no real positive impact from an economic standpoint, and numerous environmentally sensitive areas would be impacted to receive such a minor potential increase in tax revenue. Throughout the past few decades, the Nevada County General Plan has been updated a handful of times, and each time an update was completed, the general plan designation of the general project area, including the project parcel, was not modified due to the conclusion that the existing general plan designation of Rural 20 was accurate and the correct designation for the overall area due to the remoteness of the area, the difficult topography, and presence of environmentally sensitive resources. Pursuit to the Nevada County Code, the findings required to be made to support approval of a rezone are the same findings required to be made to support approval of a general plan amendment. And therefore, similar to the general plan amendment, the planning commission found that the proposed rezone is not consistent with the first required finding, because the proposed change of the zoning district designation would create an inconsistency with the general surrounding parcels and has the potential to set a precedent for the surrounding parcels to the east, west, and north to modify the zoning designations as well, which has the potential to alter the existing character of the neighborhood if those surrounding parcels were to apply and achieve the same desired result. While the parcels to the south are zoned Ag 10, the majority of these parcels are directly connected to Tyler Foot Road, which is a county-maintained road, and the majority of all the parcels to the south are relatively between 1 to 3 acres in size, which is significantly smaller than the project parcel. Additionally, the planning commission found that the proposed rezone is not consistent with the second finding, because the proposed project is not in the public health interest and has the potential to create adverse impacts to the health, safety, convenience, and welfare of the county due to, as mentioned earlier, that the project is in a very remote area and has challenging topography. It would increase the overall density in the area that's designated very high fire severity and is located on a dead-end road where evacuation capabilities have not been improved but would be potentially further impacted. And as a part of the proposed project, and this kind of demonstrates that the project site is not physically suitable for the request and the rezone. Due to the numerous exceptions and variations to the current standards identified in the Nevada County Code that would be needed in order to make the project compliant with the Nevada County Code standards, the proposed project has the potential to create further adverse impacts that would not be present with denial of the proposed project. So the recorded parcel map found in Book 12 of Parcel Maps at page 33, as mentioned earlier, did, created the parcel of relatively same size and configurations. And this was, and when this was done, this was kind of utilized in order to kind of create an overall area that is of, like I mentioned, similar size, similar configuration, and similar allowable uses and type deal. And the project site is not physically suitable for the land division and the proposed density, because the project site is located in a remote area on a dead-end road, contains the challenging topography, which would not allow for very adequate fires safe standard access roads to be constructed without the approval of a petition for exceptions to fire safe driveway standards. It increases the density in an area that is where evacuation capabilities are already limited and challenging, and provides a very minimal positive economic impact and would impact multiple environmentally sensitive areas, such as steep slopes, ephemeral drainage channels, and landmark oak grove. There are aquatic resources within the project area, including natural drainage areas within the southern and central sections of the subject parcel that are subject to the 50-foot non-disturbance requirements of the Nevada County Code. And upgrades to the existing culverts would be required, and the existing access roads would need to be widened as a part of the proposed project in order to meet code and require grading in these kind of areas that do contain these drainage channels and that contain the 50-foot non-disturbance buffer. And so due to the topography, vegetation, and presence of other environmentally sensitive areas, crossing the drainages would be inevitable to provide access to the proposed building envelopes in MUSA areas, and the impacts of this would be completely avoided if the project were to be denied. The parcel includes protected oak resources, including multiple areas of landmark oak grove and a single landmark oak tree itself, which are considered environmentally sensitive resources pursuant to the Nevada County Code. A total of 6.8 acres of landmark oak grove occur within the project area, and a total of 0.3 acres of native oak and other hardwood trees would potentially be removed by the upgrades to the access roads. The proposed grading activities required for the access roads would cut directly through multiple areas designated as landmark oak grove, which would also be completely avoided if the proposed project were to be denied. The proposed project proposes a petition for exception to fire safe driveway standards for the driveway slopes exceeding 16% for the proposed improvements. As mentioned earlier, a steep slopes and management plan was previously approved in June of 2020 for the grading of an access road and proposed grading for areas within slopes of greater than 30%, and the planning department did recognize this previously approved steep slopes and management as a part of this application. While a petition for exceptions to fire safe driveway standards and a previously approved steep slopes management plan are being utilized in order to provide the best attempt to prevent negative impacts to existing soil conditions, slope stability, and erosion due to grading in those areas that exceed 30% slope, these potential impacts could be completely avoided if the proposed project were to be denied. The planning department prepared a draft initial study and proposed mitigated negative declaration for the proposed project that was available for a public review period of 31 days that stemmed from March 21st of 2025 through April 21st of 2025. The initial study identified potential impacts associated with this project to air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, noise, transportation, tribal cultural resources, utilities and service systems, and wildfire. All of the potential impacts that were identified have been mitigated below levels of significance pursued or pursuant to CEQA's thresholds of significance, and therefore, the mitigated negative declaration was determined to be the appropriate environmental document for the project. And the initial study and mitigated negative declaration can be approved without approving the other entitlements as well. So on the screen there, I outlined a couple of the general plan policies that we found that the project is inconsistent with. And so it is inconsistent with general plan policies 1.1.2 and 1.6.1, because the proposed project would create an inconsistency with the general surrounding parcels and has the potential to set a precedent for the surrounding parcels to modify their general plan designations as well, which, as mentioned, would have the potential to alter the existing character of the neighborhood and increase the overall density by quite a bit amount of the area of those surrounding parcels were to apply and achieve the same result as the proposed parcel. And the proposed project would disrupt those similarities and inconsistencies that have already been achieved as a part of previous land use mapping that had been completed. It's inconsistent with general plan policies EP 10.1.4 and SF 10.6.3, because the proposed project is located in the remote area and accessed off of a dead-end road that already has limited evacuation capabilities, and therefore, the amendment would increase the density without providing any benefit to these evacuation routes and capabilities in case of a natural disaster. And the access roads that are proposed as a part of the project would all be over 16% slope, and with harsh weather conditions in the area, it has the potential to prohibit emergency access to the proposed building envelopes. And then it is also, we found it inconsistent with general plan policy 13.9 as well, because the proposed project would open up potential development in areas designated as environmentally sensitive areas, which would all be avoided if the proposed amendment were to be denied. So therefore, the planning commission has recommended that the Board of Supervisors take the following actions, 1 through 3, as shown on the screen. 1, adopt the attached resolution adopting the proposed mitigative negative declaration and mitigation and monitoring and reporting plan pursuant to sections 15074 and 15097 of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, making the findings contained within the attached resolution. 2, adopt the attached resolution denying amending the general plan land use map designation from rural with a minimum parcel size of 20 acres to rural with a minimum parcel size of 10 acres, and denying amending zoning district map number 37 to rezone assessors parcel number 060150063 from general agricultural with the minimum parcel size of 20 acres to general agricultural with the minimum parcel size of 10 acres. And 3, adopt the attached resolution denying the proposed tentative parcel map, water course management, oak resource management plan, and petition for exceptions to fire safe driveway standards based on the findings contained within the attached draft resolution. Should the Board choose to go a different direction than the recommendations made by the planning commission for denial and choose to approve the proposed project, a motion shall be made by the Board to direct staff to return to the Board of Supervisors with resolutions in support of the project at a later date to be determined, which would be noticed appropriately. And that concludes my presentation and open to any and all questions.
Thank you so much, Zachary. Well done. So we're gonna, this is, we're gonna come back to the Board for questions for planning department, and then the applicant will have an opportunity to make their presentation, and then we'll have time for questions there as well. And then we'll take action after public comment on the three items. So back to the Board, I'm gonna ask you all to please keep your comments and questions focused. We're really behind our agenda. So I will start with Supervisor Hook.
Yeah, thank you very much. So I do have questions. I feel like some of this, it was really interesting to go back. I'm a little concerned with planning commission at the time, actually. You had a lot of new board members, you had new commissioners, and I was disappointed there weren't questions. I think there could have been a lot more questions that happened on this particular item. You keep talking about the 20-acre parcels that are above, but you have 10-acre parcels on the bottom. So it is really not that out of the realm. And then I have a couple of things, you know, we talked about the dead-end standard. So the road isn't meet the dead-end standard. It doesn't look like it's short, like 50 feet of that, neither here nor there. But one of the mitigations was to put in a 20-foot road that would meet that standard. So I'm kind of curious about that, real quickly. I mean, because that would actually be a benefit to that community, because there's houses, each piece of, each parcel is all developed around it. So those were a couple of the questions I had, and even with moving the house to another part, if you split the parcel, that also included a paved road to the house, which would be a benefit for, you're talking about not health and safety. So I'm just curious how that part slide in it, and if we can meet the standard for the CEQA on that, but yet deny all of the other studies that were done that had mitigation in it, those were just a little extreme for me. So I know that's a lot of questions all in one. But, and this is the problem, I guess I'm looking at, if we look at these types of projects where the zoning is gonna be this, I guess, why do we even allow a project to happen if we're not getting allowed for general plan amendments? That's huge. I'm sure there's a lot of money invested into this at some point, right? So these are some of the concerns, I think, that we look at. We need to look changing. We're trying to develop housing. Granted, I don't want them in the wooie. I get that. But the other side of it is, it could be a benefit to all those acreages if it's cleared and managed and has vegetation management. It could be a win. So there, you can look at this in a couple of different directions.
Chair Hall, can I jump in here for a moment?
Yes.
Okay. Supervisor Hook, I just want to make sure, I believe that you have been up to the property and met, and so just for the public's information, if you could divulge that information.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I did meet with the folks from Millennium. I did have a conversation with them. I did drive up and look at the property. I didn't hike it, however, so I had to do a little more research as far as using Google Maps and some of that information. I did talk to a couple of the neighbors, so I tried to do a little more extra research on this, just because it's an interesting project, and it felt like it got denied, especially looking at some of the things that were, could have been mitigated that actually could be a benefit.
Go ahead, Zachary or Brian, if you could address, if you want any clarification on those questions, ask me, but otherwise, just if you could try to respond to them.
Supervisors, I'll try to touch on, hopefully, the points brought up by Supervisor Hook. Now the zoning map, please. So in the analysis of this project, you know, we try to take into account what is set by the general plan and what is set by the zoning ordinance or the zoning district. And so as we went over in the staff report, the creation of all these lots back in the 70s were created as 20-acre parcels. The area to the south has a different variety of different maps that created those parcels, as well as different-sized parcels. And as Zach mentioned, a number of those parcels take access off a county-maintained road, whereas up in this area, it's more remote, it's on private roads, and the topography and the resources are a little bit more challenging for development. But it really does come down to more of a policy decision, and so that's kind of the distinction between the environmental document and the recommendation for approval of a mitigated negative declaration, while there is a need for management plans for impacts into some of the resources, such as steep slopes and oak trees, not to the level of significance under CEQA. So that's why staff is recommending approval of the mitigated negative declaration as adequate environmental review for the project either way, for denial and for approval. However, the other half of considering a project or an entitlement is its consistency with the general plan and the zoning ordinance. And so while CEQA and the policies are related, they can be standalone. And so in, just in viewing the overall neighborhood with the way these lots were created and the location, the creation or the amending this parcel to a rural 10, an Ag 10, when it's surrounded on three sides by 20-acre parcels with a 20-acre zoning, could be viewed as being inconsistent with the surrounding property. And given kind of the supporting information regarding the need for the petition for exception and the management plans, while not a significant impact to the environment, kind of illustrates the difficulty and challenges in developing this site. So in the end, the recommendation and the, from staff and from the planning commission, found it to be inconsistent with the general plan policies based on those factors, however, not a significant impact to the environment. And that's kind of the result, or which results in the recommendations before you today. However, again, it is, you know, a policy decision, and so that's why we've provided, if your Board were to find this consistent and want to change the general plan, we would need to come back with conditions of approval and supporting documents, but we certainly and supporting documents, but we certainly could do that in the following weeks. But trying to just explain staff's analysis and conclusions in making the recommendations to the planning commission and ultimately your board.
Lisa?
I don't have any questions. I'll have comments after this.
Okay. Hardy? Questions for the planning?
Yep. The, the, the parcel map with the large landmark oak tree there, is that within the footprint of the proposed road expansion area or is that within the footprint? Can you just describe how close that is? It's hard for me to tell from here.
So the, the landmark oak tree itself is, is just outside of the proposed improvements of the access road. So that, so that one wouldn't really be potentially impacted just because of the fact that they, it was designed so that it would eliminate any sort of direct impacts to that landmark oak tree that exists on the parcel.
Then the staff report had a, an acreage total of disturbance related to the, to the Oakland, oak woodland and the road. Can you just point out, is that just scattered across? So let me say this more clearly. The, the mitigated negative deck, obviously is your recommendation is to support that. But the question for me is, is there woodlands that are gonna be affected as presented with the proposed road alignment?
Yes, Supervisor Bullock. So there would be approximately zero point three acres of designated landmark oak grove that would be impacted due to the, the grading of the access roads to access the, the musda areas and the proposed building envelopes at the, on the, kind of at the back of the proposed parcels. And yeah, so it, it cuts through a couple of different areas of landmark oak grove that are designated.
Okay, thank you.
Real quick question. The general plan, when was the last updated? And do we have any idea of when we'd be due for another one or when it may be coming up? You may not know.
So the, the overall comprehensive adoption of the general plan last occurred in nineteen ninety five, however, we've done a number of updates through it over the last twenty five years in different elements. We, we looked at the overall zoning and general plan designations in around two thousand and sixteen and didn't make any changes at that time, although that wasn't an effort to try to revamp the entirety of the general plan. We haven't done that exercise in, in many years. And at this point, we don't have a set timeframe for doing that again. We continue to work on other elements that are required to be updated by state statutes.
Okay, we're gonna reserve the right to ask more questions, but let's move on to the applicant's representation. Go ahead, introduce yourselves for us. Thank you.
I assume this clicker works for the slideshow? Yeah, okay. If it doesn't, then I'll have you address it. Good morning. My name is Rob Wood. I'm with Millennium Planning and Engineering. And I'm here today representing the applicant and property owner, Mike Gableman. He's here as well. And he'd probably like to say a few words after my presentation, but thanks for the opportunity to present, tell our side of the story, so to speak. This is a unusual situation, somewhat uncomfortable situation to have a different recommendation or to not have staff support for recommendation. I think this is a first for me. So anyway, I'd like to tell our side of the story and, and I have a brief presentation followed by the applicant. So in the staff report and that staff just went over, there was five or so things that they had issues with. One, these things I'll cover in the presentation. The first one is that there was multiple entitlements required. There's a total of seven. That they believe rezoning was not in the public interest. They believe that the, there's an inconsistency with the general plan policies and also of the surrounding parcels. And then lastly, they mentioned that they feel like there's a negligible economic impact to approve this. Make sure. So before I get started, this is just to kind of give some context. This shows the parcel. Tyler Foot Road is a highly traveled Nevada County road. Scenic Drive is the access to the parcel. The corner of the parcel is about eight hundred feet off of Tyler Foot Road. The blue circle you see there is the existing house. The purple line up to the top of the hill is an existing driveway and that driveway was approved with a commercial cannabis permit back in, I think, twenty twenty one. That cannabis permit is, is no longer. And up at the top there, where we're proposing one of the building envelopes, that's the old cannabis operation. So the entitlements required for this really breaks down into two different categories or actually three different categories. The first category, obviously to subdivide into two parcels, we need to do a tentative parcel map. The parcel is twenty one point four acres. So to subdivide it, we propose rezoning it from ag twenty to ag ten. That allows us to subdivide into two parcels. The general plan amendment comes into play because we have to have consistency between the general plan and the zoning. It's rural general plan land use designation going to another general land use designation. So, or rural. The reason for the amendment is because there's the number after it. If there were no number after it, really there's five acre, ten acre, twenty acre, thirty acre, forty acre in the county. They're all rural designations, but the fact that they have a number after it means you have to do a general plan amendment. So if it was just rural, we wouldn't be here for a GPA. We'd be here just for a rezone. I think that's important to note. Then the rest of the entitlements, the four entitlements that was discussed, those were all done because of improvements to an existing driveway that's on site. So that driveway was approved with a commercial cannabis operation, but in order to make it to a, a fire standard safe driveway, we have to widen it, put in turnouts, lessen the slopes. All of those associated improvements with that driveway require a management plan for oak resources because as we widen it, we will be taking out a few oak trees. We do have to cross a drainage way that has a culvert. We have to lengthen that culvert. So that required an aquatic resources management plan. And then the steep slope and petition for exception were already in the previous cannabis permit. So we just extend those to this because there are places where it will be greater than sixteen percent, but less than twenty percent. So timeline of this project, we've been working on this for over two years. A lot of work goes in to what we gotta do before we even submit a pre-application. But typically with most projects, we submit a pre-application. We did that in June of twenty twenty three. And then it takes a long time to get everything ready for a formal submittal. So we had to do a cultural assessment, a bioinventory, several OSIs to make sure we have sewage disposal. We did an extensive grading plan for the improvements to the driveway to make it safer and a drainage analysis. And then once we have all that, we do a formal submittal. That came in April twenty twenty four. Following that first submittal, we got some comments back from staff, planning staff. And we made a site visit with staff, walked the site and discussed doing the rest of the management plans now versus later for the improvements to the driveway. We took all that, resubmitted in July. And then they, the planner that we originally worked with left the county. So we were assigned a different planner, which was Zach. And that was the second submittal. Did some minor cleanup stuff after the second submittal. And after the third submittal, we got a, we received a complete letter to, that they were gonna move forward with CEQA review and the ISMIND. So you already saw this, staff showed this. This is a lot of information, a little bit tough to read, but that's a, there's a lot of information that's required to go on a tentative map. So to simplify it, this is just a simplified version of it. It really is, you have scenic drive on the bottom there. That's within a sixty foot right of way. The existing home is there on the bottom right. And the parcel would basically be split roughly up the middle. On the left side would be about an eleven point four acre parcel and on the right side about a ten acre parcel. The driveway that you see on the left going all the way to the top of the hill is an existing driveway. That was a driveway that was approved, constructed for a commercial cannabis operation. The reason for extra building envelopes, excuse me, is, we don't know, we like to give some flexibility on where people are gonna build their home and then also leave flexibility for ADUs if they so choose to build an ADU in the future. So that's why there's more than one building envelope on each side. This is the existing home. As you can see, there's very good vegetation management around the home. That's typical after you build a home to do a pretty extensive vegetation management in accordance with PRC forty two ninety one. Few slides here of the existing driveway that goes to the top. This will be widened. We'll put turnouts, it'll be paved. And also in places that are real steep, we'll lessen those slopes. Here's another picture of the driveway and one more. So here's the zoning in, in the area. To the left, you can see the yellow line, that's Highway forty nine. And the red star is the project. And a whole bunch of different, this is the land use designations, not the zoning, but it's compatible with the zoning. So this was easier to follow. But these are all rural land use designations. You have rural five, pretty big area of five acre zoning, ten acre zoning, twenty, thirty, and forty. And then up at the top right corner, you can see the red zoning. That's Mother Truckers commercial area. And then just below that is the light blue, that's the existing fire station. So the fire station's located right down the street. So here's a blow up of the zoning. This just shows the size of the parcels all around this. When you turn on the scenic drive, there's three or four parcels that access off of scenic drive within the rural ten and the ag ten zoning before you get to our parcel. A lot of the parcels to the south are either the same size or smaller than what we're So housing, wanna talk about that a little bit. Housing's a big deal. I mean, it's, it's, it's a real concern at the state level and it's a, it's obviously a real concern at the county level. So much a concern that the state has mandated many ways to improve, to increase housing through assembly bills and senate bills. And the board has made it, housing a primary objective. Obviously with housing, not just this project, but all sorts of housing in the county, there's a lot of challenges. We see them daily. I know you see them daily as well, so you're familiar with them. But just to go over some of the challenges that we see, access is probably the number one issue we see that, that makes it difficult to subdivide property in Nevada County. We have many, many projects that come through our door that we can't do because they, they have the zoning, they meet the general plan, but they don't have, they either exceed the dead end road length or they don't have legal access. A lot, there's a lot of private access throughout the county that you just can't, you can't subdivide because you can't get legal access from the neighbors. There's limited infrastructure, that's another problem. High cost, the costs have skyrocketed since twenty twenty, as everybody knows, not just land, but materials and labor. These types of projects often come with on and on, onsite improvements, which sometimes makes a project infeasible. Environmental constraints is also another one that's a challenge. Wetlands, floodplain. We're actually working on a project now with, that has six lots that's merging back into one lot. And that's because there, five of the lots are all in a floodplain, can't be built. So that's, that's going the opposite direction of what the county needs for housing. Zoning restrictions is another one. And then community opposition, a lot of people don't want more density, more traffic in their area. Thankfully on this one, the neighborhood was in high support. We had zero opposition on this so far and it's been highly supported. I hope all of you got a chance to go back and see the planning commission because that you would have heard the support from the neighbors in this area. And then lastly, the process just to get here and to go through subdividing and creating housing in the county is a lengthy and costly process. Definitely we, we feel that, especially with this one. It's been a long haul just to get here. Emergency preparedness is another board objective. This is, goes kind of hand in hand with housing. Fire, safety, and preparedness is on everybody's mind. And that's forefront of every project that we design. The goal's always with every project is access, improvements to roadways. We wanna have safe access. That's why it's a pretty strict requirement for dead end road length. If you exceed it, you, you can't subdivide. Vegetation management and then who maintains all that? Who maintains the roadways? Who maintains the vegetation? So general plan consistency, this is really the crux of the disagreement, I think, between us and staff on this one is they're subjective. There's different ways to look at it and also different ways to weigh the general plan consistency. So I just wanna go through each one of these pretty quickly. The first general plan policy that staff believes we're inconsistent with is impacts to open rural lifestyle. Right now with one house on twenty one point four acres, that's about ninety seven percent open space. If we were to subdivide this and put a second house, even ADUs, you're probably looking at worst case about ninety four percent open space. Still a lot of open space, almost no impact. I guess I wouldn't say zero impact, so I would say low impact to create one more lot. Also creating one more lot has a potential for just more than one housing unit. You can do ADUs and you can also do junior ADUs. You actually do have the ability to create a lot more than just one house by approving this land subdivision. So the next one talks about land uses protect, enhance, and complement the existing communities. When we talk about land uses, everything surrounding this is the same land use. They're all rural, whether it's rural twenty, rural ten, rural thirty, it's all rural. It's the same land uses and the same ag zoning throughout. So this is a low impact house that fits in perfectly with the surrounding neighborhood, which is why I think we have the neighborhood's support for this. The next one is adequate evacuation routes. The evacuation route in this case is scenic drive. It already accesses seven or eight parcels. If you've driven out there to scenic drive, it varies in width from about thirteen to fifteen feet. As part of this project, it would be expanded to a fire safe standard road. So it would be twenty four feet, twenty feet plus shoulders, would be twenty four feet. So significant improvement to that entire neighborhood that already uses this existing roadway for their evacuation route. And we're well, well, well under the dead end road length. So next one talks about minimizing hazards resulting from wildfire. Again, we're gonna, this is a project that's gonna increase fire safety. We're gonna improve the roadway to it. We're gonna improve the existing driveway to the top. That creates fire breaks. And then also you have a defensible space. Anytime you build a house, you're subject to PRC forty two ninety one, which makes increased defensible space. And also subdividing from twenty acres to ten acres makes it a lot easier to maintain. I don't know if anybody's tried to maintain twenty acres of forest land before, but it's not easy. Not many people can do it. And ten acres is much easier to maintain than twenty acres. So from a fire safety standpoint, I think this increases fire safety. Lastly, the preservation of trees. We think we're consistent with this as well. The potential to oaks and trees, very, very minimal. There's over a thousand trees on the site. It's very heavily wooded. Most of the tree removal, I would say ninety nine percent of it is just associated with improving the existing driveway. When you widen the road, we're gonna have to take out some trees to widen that. And that's actually a good thing, creates a fire break. So the benefits of this.
Sir, I was just gonna interrupt. You're making excellent points. I just need to ask you to move along, move it along for us, please. Thank you.
Okay. I'll just skip over this because everybody knows the benefits of, of housing. So I'll skip this. Just quickly go through this and then I just have, then I'll recap. So regarding the entitlements required, I already explained why there's seven. Being not in the public. not in the public interest, to that, I would say that housing and fire-safe standard roads are always in the public interest. As far as inconsistency with general plan policies, I went through all the policies. I think we're consistent with all of them. Especially consistency with the surrounding parcels. Same land uses, same rural designations, same ag zoning. And then negligible economic impact, maybe from a jobs housing ratio standard. But when you build a new house, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars. And typically, that's local money, local contractors. And you apply an economic multiplier effect to that, this project has a potential of well over a million dollars in community benefits. So just working through, recapping this, I'll just jump to the end. I think that this is a positive economic impact. There's neighborhood support. I think it's a, it's a good project for the county. And it meets the county's objective of housing, of making housing a priority. And this is how you get housing. It's challenging. We see it, we're on the front lines of housing. And, and we see the challenges every day. This is one that makes sense, because it checks all the boxes. The only thing it needs is a rezone and a general plan amendment. It checks all the other boxes, unlike many that we go through that has the zoning, has the general plan, but can't check the boxes for many reasons that I gave. So with that, I'll, I'll close. And if the applicant, the property owner wants to say a few words, then we'll answer questions.
Okay, great. Did you want to say a few words, or can we, can we move on? And you can stay there, so, because, for, for questions.
Would you rather do it during public comment?
Now's fine, if you'd like to.
Yeah, and I know we are behind schedule, so I'll keep it short as well. My name is Mike. I'm in District 4. And it's a pleasure to be here. I am a smoke jump pilot for the US Forest Service and have been relentlessly fighting fires in this area of Northern California for the last three years. I'm passionate about fire safety, and I can tell you with all my heart that a project like this is very beneficial for fire safety. And I am confused, at the very least frustrated, and I, I just really don't understand where staff is coming from in their points for denial, other than to give them the benefit of the doubt that maybe their hands are tied. Maybe they're feeling like they need to hear from you. Maybe they're not really understanding the memo, that we are in a high housing crisis, and this is not a problem, it's a solution. That taking a 20-acre lot right there, which is right against other 10-acre lots, and beginning a process of, of individual consideration, but being open to amendments to allow more housing that fit. And so maybe they just need to hear from you, and to untie their hands, and to not cause homeowners like myself a two-year, $100,000 application process that's extremely, extremely difficult. And so I would just encourage you supervisors to help them untie their hands, to help housing, the housing crisis to be a little more mitigatable. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go straight to open it to public comment. And so we, then we'll bring it back to the board for all our questions.
Michael Taylor, District 1. I went, when I saw it on the agenda, I went back and watched the planning commission meeting. And I have some concerns that I would like to raise with you guys about the planning commission meeting. One, four of the five showed up. And to be honest with you, I don't know whose is who, Planning Commissioner, but I think to understand that people spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to put projects forward, all five planning commissioners need to show up. My other concern in watching the planning commission was, actually, I think I know this one. I think it's Heidi's planning commissioner as the chair. And I think that the way she was handling the, the meeting was not conducive of somebody that's chair. The other part of it that seemed a little bit out of balance, the person, I think, that's in your district, I think Sue, he kind of controlled the meeting.
So, so Michael, I just need, I'm sorry to interrupt. We'll give you a few seconds. Please address the project, the project. This is not about the planning commission or individuals.
I'm addressing it through my experience in watching the planning commission meeting.
I understand, but I'd like you to try to focus on the project.
I only have three minutes, anyway you look at it, so.
Yeah, we'll give you an extra couple.
All right, thank you. So the planning commissioner, what I've noticed is that either in the planning commissioner or the board, when the person in that district takes control of that meeting, then it just goes that way, completely goes that way. So they voted 4-0 on a project that also, the part of the, me watching the meeting, I was, it seemed to me that, that the, the planning commissioner person, Zach, Zach, repeated himself multiple times in his presentation.
Michael, I need you to focus on the project, please.
I am, I'm talking.
Not the commissioners on the planning commission, okay? You have a minute left.
Thank you. So he repeated himself many times, I thought was leading the, the commission to vote no on it, when it lacked the, the ability to share the reasons why this should be approved or could be approved. Personally, it improves the roads for fire. Personally, they didn't even adopt, or suggest adopting the EIR. You know, the EIR, I think, should have been adopted. That was the board, the staff actually suggested adopting it. And I highly recommend, or highly suggest, this is going to help the community. It's going to, it is going to set a precedence for other members of the community to consider subdividing their property. Then no one complained. The nether neighbors said that 20 acres is too much to take care of. They're like, like, to divide their property. And it kind of sets a precedence for starting the process to create housing that meets all of the obligations for subdividing. So I highly suggest that whatever the next step is, to get the approval, what would be the approval process for this. And I can't believe, or I'm kind of surprised the approval process wasn't part of the presentation to begin with. So I would suggest to any.
Thank you. Any callers?
No callers.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to close public comment. Oh, sorry, Tom, come on up.
Thank you. Tom Durk, No Place to Go Project, District 4. If there's a negative declaration, and it does increase housing, and does improve the safety of the people in the neighborhood by increasing the road, I would say, I would suggest approving the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Closing public comment now. Bring it back to the board. So I'd like to encourage you to ask all the questions you want. But reminder that if you, we can have them bring this back if we want them, staff to go in a different direction at a later date. And if that's something you want to do, this would be the time to mention that as well. So who has questions? Hardy?
Technical questions. I'm unclear on the consistency with the road standards. So the staff report has bullet under project site, not physically suitable for land division, petition for exemptions for fire driveway standards inevitable. We already know that they're, they're going to ask for an exemption. Or do you believe that they can meet with mitigation the requirements of the fire standard?
Supervisor Bullock, I just want to be clear. Are you referencing the driveways or the access road itself?
The driveway.
Yeah. So due to the slope of the, the area, that's, that is what's requiring the petition for exception to those fire-safe driveway standards, because there's no way it could be brought, just because of the slope of it, it's, that is the main reason and the cause for the PFX. That is why it's inevitable that the PFX was, was just because of the slope of the road.
Okay. But just to be clear, the applicant is going to submit an exemption request, and they're going to build the road to the standard specified in the plan. Done, it meets the need, right? There's nothing, I'll ask it differently. There's nothing in the submission of the, by the applicant that does not meet the current fire road standards in, in that section. Is that correct?
No, that's the, the need for the petition for exception, because it does not meet the fire road standards. It needs an exception to exceed the standards, because that's the only way it can be built, given the slope. So it can be approved, but it requires a variance, if you will, from the standard. So it does not meet the standards.
And the, and the width, it means, it's going to meet the width, it's not going to meet the topography, the slope standard. But it will meet the se, the distance from the connector roads.
I think there's turnouts provided, so I don't know if it meets the width all the way through. But the, the slope is, I think, the main exception. It's mainly just the slopes, it looks like.
And is the slope, just anecdotally, is the slope continuous, or is it just the pitch up during the areas where it's going to cross certain steep slopes?
Just a couple areas where we have to exceed 16%. And the existing driveway is well over 20%. We're actually reduce it down to 20% and ask for the petition for exception, which they had already got that granted when they did the commercial cannabis permit.
Okay. And then one more quick question. The steep slopes plan, management plan, does that include the work required for the driveway, like BMPs and drainage, and when you do the work? Those two are married together, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then one final question. The oak, the mitigation of the oak, the .03 impact acres, is that related to the road construction, or the house pads, or both?
Thank you, Supervisor Bullock. So it would, it would be related to both, but mainly for the, the extra grading for the fire-safe standard, or for, I guess, for, for the driveways.
Okay. And then the plan calls out the culverts and wetland crossings, and says inevitably there will be additional exemptions required. Or is the applicant confident that they can mitigate the impact on all the stream courses in the construction of the driveway?
Yes. They can all be mitigated, and they, we did a management plan for that.
Thanks. That's all my questions.
I don't really have any questions. I think I came here with an open mind, and I, I get the, the staff perspective. I, I think it speaks to the bigger issue of perhaps a general plan update. I was struck by Supervisor Hook's comments, including the fact that take the parcel immediately to the south of this parcel, they're surrounded by 10, well, at least five parcels that are 10 acres or less. So anyways, nothing to repeat. I think the decision before us has been laid out, and I think, yeah, I, I think the more housing we can encourage, seems like in this case, it's some administrative obstacles as opposed to the actual project on the ground, which, yeah, I think, like you said, the applicants said, we're here to give direction on that in certain cases. So, yeah, no question.
Sure. So I actually, I know that, are these three separate motions?
You appear to be looking at me. So the answer is yes, but if.
Okay. That's all, that's all I need. So my recommendation would be.
There's a question. It's, we're just doing questions right now, sorry. Sue, Sue needs her chat still to talk.
I'm good, right now.
Okay.
Yeah, just please, just questions first.
So, okay. Well, why don't you go ahead? I'm ready to make a motion. I don't have any questions or comments. I just.
So, Chair.
Well, Hardy actually hit almost all the questions I really still had on this, so I'm fine with that. I just keep looking back at this. I think there's some things to look at, because, one, the driveway was already permitted one time, and it went through CEQA for some of that. I just, those things, I think there was room to maybe maneuver this a little differently.
And Chair Hall, if I could, so they, they are three separate motions, but if this board's intent was to give direction to bring this back, there are findings, et cetera, the cleaner approach would just, to be a motion to continue the item and give direction.
We understand, understand that. Okay. Lisa, did you want to make?
So I would make the motion that we ask staff to go back on 91B and 91C and create findings of approval for this project. I understand, a lot of work went into this. I completely understand where you came to your conclusion, and also where the planning commission came to their conclusion. But as the policymakers, I think that they have met the objectives of what we're looking for here with the fire safety, with additional housing. And also, I think there's justification, because they are surrounded by 10-acre parcels. So that would be my motion right now. And then, do we want to address 91A also, or would that also come back?
I would suggest it comes back as one entire item. Thank you.
Can we have a second, and then we'll have discussion?
I'll second.
Unless you have a friendly second. Okay, go ahead.
My comment is, I, I would, whoops, hang on. I'd support your motion. The only piece is, in practical approach to this, the 20s, if they all got split into 10, there's no community opposition now. But if you took them all and split them into 10, it would change the character, right? I think that's one of the basics for me. And that, I was impressed by the fact that there was no community opposition to this. So that speaks a lot from my planning commission background. Usually, if people don't like something, you hear about it right away. So I just wanted to point out that while I do support that, I'm looking forward to the staff bringing it back. And I just, as one supervisor, I'd request that you gave a comprehensive overview to the continuation of parcel changes from 20 to 10, and just summarize the differences in community character from that standpoint.
That was a good point, because I would just like to say, too, some of the neighbors said that actually 20 acres was becoming a bigger challenge for them to manage. And so I think that's what they were looking at as well. So maybe, and that all comes back to a whole general plan amendment at some point in time, but something that we should look at for the future.
And I'll just comment, I support this action. And it sounds to me like we do need to have a conversation about going back to look at the general plan, that we are trying to encourage housing. Any other comments before we take a vote on this? Okay. We have a motion in a second. Loryana?
District 5.
Yes. Wait, let's, let's restate the motion, to come back, to bring the whole item back at a later date with a different recommendation.
And, and, and I would say at that later date, as soon as you can possibly get it in coordination with the applicants, to get it back to us at our, hopefully, our next meeting in July or two weeks after that, depending upon noticing.
Okay. Sorry, can you, sorry, Loryana, can you start over?
District 5.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
District 4.
Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
District 1.
Yes. Okay, thank you all so much. Let's see, I don't think we have any more actions on this. Thanks, everybody, for all the work you put into this. And we'll, we'll see this coming back to us at another time. Okay, we are really time challenged, so we are, I am going to suggest, Allison, say so, if there's any issue, I'm going to suggest that our Habitat for Humanity item gets postponed.
So that, that has been done. So they'll come back this afternoon.
Great.
Or we could postpone them at a different meeting.
That's, let's see, yeah, let's do that, if that's okay.
Okay.
And then the question is, do we break for lunch very briefly with closed session, and then come back for item 92, 96, or do we just try to power through? I'd kind of like us to just move through.
Yeah, if we could go through the next item, that'd be helpful, because our, Lisa's only available until one, our labor attorney.
Okay, right. Yep, let's do that. Can folks, yeah, well, maybe. All right, anybody, if you need a quick bio break, just run and take it.
No, but just a really quick question. On the habitat issue, is that time sensitive for today because of the granting application?
Tyler, can you respond to that? Good question.
Because they actually would have time to come back this afternoon, because we don't have a lot on our afternoon agenda.
Supervisor Swarth, I don't know that it's specifically time sensitive, but they do want to get the funding in place so they can move forward. And we do have a pretty short presentation.
Okay, so let's keep it today, to the very end.
Yeah, that's a great point. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we are going to move into resolution, a number of resolutions. Let me get my, my, regarding memorandum of understanding with a number of our associations. I'll let you guys walk through it. This, again, will be something where we will have the presentation for all of the items. Then we'll have one public comment on all of them. And then we'll come back to the board for questions, and we'll vote on each separately. Do I have that correct, county council? Okay, that's correct. All right, Patrick, take it away.
All right. Good afternoon, Chair Hall, members of the board. I'm joined in person today with Susan Cudera, currently serving as a principal management analyst in human resources, as well as Lisa Charbonneau, our chief labor negotiator, who is virtual. Also wanted to acknowledge some folks not at the table, including Under Sheriff Sam Brown, HHSA Director Ryan Grover, and other members of the HR team who supported labor negotiations this year. And most. And most importantly, recognizing the bargaining in employee groups who are the subject of these agreements. We're very pleased today to bring you five agreements. Three are MOUs with represented labor groups, two are summary of compensation and benefits. Susan and I will split those. I'll be presenting on the MOUs, which included negotiation that lasted roughly from February until May of this year. And then Susan will provide you with a summary of the benefits and compensation for the non-represented groups. So with that, the groups that we'll be discussing this morning include the Deputy Sheriffs Association, which is 48 employees, the Sheriff's Management Association, which is 24 employees, the Management Employees Association of 85, and then senior execs are 27, and elected officials, not including the board, are six. Some common terms across all of the groups that we are discussing today first is that we're looking at compensation set for a three-year period, beginning July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2028. And then also, across all groups, we have a baseline general salary increase of 2% in 2025, 3% in 2026, and 2% in 2027. With that, we'll jump into the specifics first with Deputy Sheriffs Association, or DSA. Additional changes to compensation package beyond those percentages that I just referenced. First, an increase in the educational incentives of $25 per month, both for deputies with an associate's and/or a bachelor's degree, that begins in 2026. We've developed longevity incentive plan that kicks in 1.5% for those folks with 10 years of service, starting in July of 2026. And an additional 1% starting in 2027, for a total of 2.5% at 10 years of service. And then lastly, market adjustments to salary of 2% in 2025, 1% in 2026, and 2% in 2027. These are based on total compensation labor market data from our eight comparable counties. Next is the Sheriff's Management Association, more commonly known as SMA. So again, looking at those items beyond the county-wide general increases. First, like you saw, the DSA educational incentives increase of $50 a month for associates and bachelor degree holders. That includes a $25 per month increase in July of '25, an additional 25 in 2026. Increased advanced post-certification pay will increase by 1% effective in 2027, so that'll jump from 5% to 6%. And then to make sure we have consistency between the DSA and SMA, adding the Critical Incident Negotiations Team specialty pay of 5%, which goes into effect July of 2025. For market adjustments, looking at 3% in 2025, 3% in 2026, and 3% in 2027 for the majority of the members of SMA. One group, which is the sergeant, will see market adjustments, a salary of 2% in 2025, 2% in 2026, and 3% in 2027. I think this is a good example of when we're looking at the market data, how very specific it gets to make sure that the increases are reflective of market. And then lastly, from me, the Management Employees Association, so again, those items beyond the flat general increase. First is an increase in personal leave accrual rate. This makes the MEA consistent with the confidential group, so zero, years zero through five will increase from 165 hours to 189 for folks with six to 10 years of service, from 192 hours to 216. Years 11 plus will increase from 200 hours per year to 224. We are removing what was set up as an additional floating holiday per year at 10 years of service, so the entire MEA group will receive a total of three floating holidays rather than two plus. Upon completion of a graduate or doctoral degree, proposing to have a tuition forgiveness program, which reduces by one-third over a period of three years, which significantly streamlines and simplifies the existing tuition reimbursement program for this group. Market adjustments to salary across the MEA of 2% in 2025, 1% in 2026, and 1.5% in 2027, again, based on labor market data from our eight comp counties, as well as some targeted classification-specific market adjustments to salary in 2027. Again, there were a handful of positions that were further behind market average, so that is what those targeted adjustments address. With that, I'll pass it over to Susan.
Good afternoon, Chair Hall and members of the board. I'm Susan Kadera from Human Resources. And on our next slide, we will be discussing the first of two unrepresented groups and what their agreement holds. In addition to the common terms that Patrick mentioned on Slide 2, we also are recommending for you that 10 out of the 27 senior executive positions receive targeted market equities based on our labor market data from our eight comparable counties. The average increase for these positions in year one is .63%. In year two, it's .41%. And in year three, it's .18%. And the 10 positions that are in line to receive those targeted equity adjustments are the Chief Information Officer, Chief Probation Officer, County Librarian, Deputy County Executive Officer, Director of Behavioral Health, Director of Child Support Services, Director of Emergency Services, Director of Facilities, Public Defender, and Under Sheriff. Notably, 17 senior executive classifications will be receiving no targeted market adjustment. And our next slide will review the second of the two unrepresented groups. And this is our elected officials group, which represents six employees. And beyond the common package terms, this group will see a car allowance increase from $500 a month to $600 a month, an increase in the management benefit allowance from $1,000 per year to $2,000 per year. This group will also receive for the first time a special allowance of 2.5% in base salary for those elected officials who have been elected to serve as a board member of their respective professional state association. And this has a max term of six years. In addition, the six individual elected official positions will see a 1.33% average equity increase in year one, a 1.5% equity adjustment in year two, and a .83% adjustment in year three. And this, again, is based on our labor market data from our eight comparable counties. And we, in addition to recognizing the members of the county's bargaining team, as Patrick did, we want to thank all of the bargaining unit representatives for our several sessions. We thank you and we will be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll come to board questions. Lisa? Sue? Hardy?
Can you just describe the rationale for the special allowance of 2.5% for serving on a special state board?
The elected officials oftentimes are elected to positions in their state professional associations, and so this incentive pay is designed to help recognize the work that they do at the state.
I mean, Chair Hall, Supervisor Bullock, I'd also like to add, being a small rural county, we have seen firsthand when we have senior executives as well as elected officials serve in executive committees of the statewide boards. They get to influence legislation, they are able to bring rural issues to policy that often does not recognize how policy impacts rural counties. And they have connection to state ledge reps as well as other state resources that's extremely beneficial to the county.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Rob, questions?
Thanks for that. The first three, I think I'm very supportive of. The, one question on the electeds, is there, what do you call it, the equity adjustment? Do the electeds, this contract, does that include that? I know the senior executives do.
Yes. So all five agreements, both the three that represent the represented groups, as well as these two summary of benefits and compensation agreements, will receive the same general pay increase of 2, 3, 2. And then for the elected officials, we discussed that certain, all six positions will receive additional market adjustments of 1.33% in year one, 1.5 in year two, and .83 in year three.
Just to clarify for my purposes, that equity adjustment, the, one of the rationales behind it is based on surveys with comparable counties to try and keep pace with them?
Yes, we, whenever we open up an agreement or a summary of benefits and compensation, we solicit impact, we solicit input about the salaries that are being paid in eight different counties with whom we compare. And we try to adjust our positions to the extent possible so that they are kept up to market, but within our fiscal authority.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I'll just jump to a comment and then I'll be done to speed things up. Part of me, I, with the electeds, have an issue with the idea that the purpose of that is to attract people, which I get for our rank and file staff and even the senior executives. But with electeds, not only do they have to reside here, I don't know, there's a weird tension for me that I don't care what other counties are paying and it's, I don't know. So I just wanted to throw that out there, but thank you for clarifying.
Okay, open it up for public comment. And this will be public comment on all of the items that were discussed.
Hi. I've raised this concern in the past, that the eight comparable counties are not comparable counties. I believe one of the ones, I forget what they are, but I believe one of them is Sacramento, one I think is possibly either El Dorado or Placer. And clearly, those counties have a much greater budget and they're not comparable. I think we should either look at comparing to five that are comparable, or somehow we need to kind of look at that differently. And I think the responsible way of looking at this is, I think since 2016, we've seen this accelerate to a point that it's unsustainable. And I think that historically, we have been going by percentages, 2% here, 1.5 here, 2% here. And if you take 10 years of 7, 8, 9% increase on staff increases, this is why we're where we're at with these accelerated figures. I think when you're making two times the, and I was talking about executive staff's salary, sorry, two times the median household income, I'm not sure that we need to be adding 2, 2.5, and 1.5, and 3 to these, to these executive staff's total financial compensations. The other thing, before I forget, is the 10%, can Allison Lehman give 10% annually to executive staff, or has that been with pulled back? I highly recommend that that is not in there as far as being able to give them an additional 10% annually. The other thing, I think people that are elected, they understand what they're being elected for, they understand what they're being paid for. And quite honestly, I don't think, I think the term of their, the term that they're in, I don't know that they need increases. I think that it's getting crazy how much an elected official is being paid now. I mean, it's, I think Michelle, I think Gina, they're in the top 10 of total financial compensation in the county. It's, somehow we got to start reeling this in, and somehow you guys promote some policies, or somehow there's got to be a way to kind of like go, okay, that hasn't worked for us real well. We're at these extremely high financial compensations and they're accelerating. And they've accelerated from 2016 to this point. And I don't know how to fix it, I can only say it's not sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have callers, Loryana?
No callers, Chair.
Okay. Go ahead, Tom.
Tom District, Tom Durkin, District 4. I'm all in favor of all the education and training we can give our law enforcement personnel, so I really encourage you to approve that. As for the staff, we have excellent staff. I've worked with them for years now and I'm very, very impressed. And we need to keep them. And, you know, people will go to higher salaries and I think it's unreasonable. And as far as the board and the other elected officials are concerned, you're not in this for the money. You get paid, you have an incredible amount of work. And I approve your compensation. It should not be prohibited to somebody without a big, an external income or a wealth. It should be anybody who is capable of doing the work, should be able to afford to do the work. And I wouldn't think that you have to be rich to be on the board to serve. So there has to be at least adequate compensation, and I think it's pretty low considering the work you guys do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments in the board chambers? And no caller. Okay, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the board. Patrick or Susan or Lisa, did you want to respond to any of those comments? No? Okay. Any final questions or comments at the board? Okay, then we're going to move into our voting. We're going to vote for each of these resolutions separately. And currently, I'm looking for a motion and a second for the resolution approving an MOU with the Deputy Sheriffs Association.
So moved.
Second.
District 5.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
District 4.
Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
District 1.
Yes. I'd like a motion and a second for the resolution approving an MOU with the Sheriff's Management Association.
So moved.
Second.
District 5.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
District 4.
Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
District 1.
Yes. I'd like a motion and a second for the resolution approving an MOU with the Nevada County Management Employees Association.
So moved.
Second.
District 5.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
District 4.
Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
District 1.
Yes. Motion and a second, please, for the resolution approving the compensation and benefits summary for senior executives.
So moved.
Second.
District 5.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
District 4.
Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
District 1.
Yes. And a motion and a second for resolution approving the compensation and benefit summary for elected officials.
So moved.
Second.
District 5.
Yes.
District 2.
No.
District 4.
Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
District 1.
Yes. Okay, great, thank you so much. Patrick and Susan and Lisa, if you were still there, thanks for being available in case we had any questions for you. All right, we are going to go into closed session and have lunch at the same time.
So Chair Hall?
Yes.
Couple of options for you to consider.
Okay.
We do have Habitat who came back, and that presentation's going to be about 10 minutes. And then we could postpone closed session after lunch, so that's an option for you. Or we could go ahead and postpone Habitat until after lunch as well.
Yeah, so you're suggesting we could go ahead and do Habitat right now and get it done? Yeah?
If the board's up for it.
Okay, are you okay with that, you guys, another 10 minutes? Okay. All right, let's do that. But then let's break for closed session and lunch. But we have to be back till 1:30, so we're going to need to combine, no?
So if the board would like a lunch, we could do the closed session in the afternoon. That's an option for you too to consider.
Do you guys want a separate lunch? What about you? Like combine it or separate? I need to hear- I need to hear from each of you, combined or separate, starting with Sue.
I don't care, I'm busy. Let's do, let's do lunch and then do closed session at the end of our, because it seems like we're gonna get out of here fairly quickly.
At the end of the day.
At the end, yeah.
Okay. What do you say? Okay, we'll do it that way.
Okay.
Thanks. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and do Habitat for Humanity. Sorry about that Tyler, for the back and forth on that and for the delay.
Thank you Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm Tyler Barrington, Interim Director of Housing and Community Services. Before passing on the presentation and acknowledging Angela Masker, Senior Administrative Analyst for our work, I also want to thank our fiscal team, Bree Mendoza Perez, Sharon Voss, Jennifer Hondell, and Chad Mingo, who assisted with this project. And also, I want to acknowledge Ryan Gruber's leadership. This is something we're very excited and proud of. And so, with that, I'll pass it on to Angela.
Thanks Tyler. Good morning Chair Hall, members of the board. I'm once again pleased to be here before you representing Housing and Community Services as your Senior Administrative Analyst. And also to welcome Lorraine Larson and Ty Botov from Habitat for Humanity to speak on the Ventana Sierra Project, which is a coordination and collaboration with the Western Nevada County Regional Housing Trust Fund. And that contract for development is before you today for your approval. Before I hand it over to Lorraine, I just wanted to talk a little bit about Nevada County's involvement and the funding that is helping to make this project possible. This is a collaboration with the Western Nevada County Regional Housing Trust Fund, which was created in 2020 as an effort to leverage state funds and maximize funding opportunities to coordinate affordable housing development. Nevada City, Grass Valley, and the County of Nevada came together to contribute funds and to participate in the trust fund towards that goal. And funding sources in the trust fund are a mix of state and local funds. And since its creation, the trust fund has leveraged several sources, including the permanent local housing allocation, the Local Housing Trust Fund, Home Dollars, and County General Fund. And we've leaned into partnerships with local organizations and with developers to realize projects like Cassians Field Affordable Housing in Nevada City, the Lone Oaks Senior Apartments in Penn Valley, and our most recent partnership with Habitat for Humanity for construction of a home in which Angela, the new homeowner, was able to purchase for her family just last fall. And so with that, I will hand it over to Lorraine to talk about the exciting details of this project.
Ben?
Oh, okay, that works. Well, first of all, let me say thank you so much for the opportunity to be here and to tell you about this project. Without a doubt, I can tell you that this kind of bold support is really going to help us accelerate our work, which is gonna benefit Habitat and the community in a major way. It's just, I can't say enough about how much it's gonna help us and there's so many ways that I can go into, but, but it's gonna help us experiment with some partnerships with local contractors, which we haven't done before, to help our builds go faster because of this kind of funding. And we really like doing that because, A, we love this community, we love working with contractors here. We also like to keep our funds local and to support local businesses. That's a big passion of ours. So whenever we get to do that, we're really happy to do that. And so, thank you very much for that. This project is four homes very near the high school on Ventana Sierra Drive. And we have broken ground and we have started on the site preparation and in fact have building permits for two out of the four homes already in hand. And so, we are moving on those homes. We have walls up on one of them already and foundations poured for two of them. And some of the infrastructure work has been started on sewer and water and all of that stuff, which is very expensive and not necessarily as exciting as the home building, but just as important. That is our biggest challenge, is preparing the sites to build. And so, this funding really is gonna help us with a big, big part of that. We have two homeowners already selected and are in the process of selecting the other two for this project. And that's gonna help approximately five adults and 13 children with permanent housing and a permanent roof over their head homeownership. So, it's really a big deal for their families. They are, as you know, they fall within the area of median income of 30 to 80%. So, they're considered low income and they will be owners of their home. And, yeah, so anywhere from 16 to 20 residents, depending on what gets selected, will be living in this little community right across from the high school. And two, three of the children who are already selected are, go to that high school. So, that's pretty exciting for them and for their parents. And as, as I wanted to share, these are modest homes. They are, you know, the two-bedroom home in the community is about 800 or 900 square feet, up to about 1,350 square feet. So, these are modest homes. All we, we work really hard to save money to build these homes so that our homeowners got an affordable mortgage and that that mortgage can be at or below 30% of their income. That's really important. So, as I said earlier, we, we broke ground. You can see here, just, this is a picture from just last week of the first walls going up. And that was pretty exciting. PG&E volunteers came out to help with that. And we are framing two of those homes. And even though our target date is June 2027, because of some of these partnerships that we're gonna be able to start working with other contractors, we think we can accelerate that until early in 2027 or possibly the end of 2026. That's our goal, so that we can move on to some other larger projects in the area. The total cost for the project estimate now, and I also want to share with you that, as you know, the cost of everything is going up and materials is, is a big problem. And with some of the things that have been happening on the political sphere, we have seen that hit us a lot. So, again, this funding is really, really helpful. But the total cost of the project is probably gonna be about 1.2 to 1.4 million, depending on some of that. And so, this is a big, big chunk of that. So, thank you very much. And I think that might be all for the slide portion, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you so much. Yeah, this is a wonderful project. And apologize that we had to wait. Our agenda just got overwhelmed a little bit today, but.
That happens.
Very exciting to see this. So, any questions by the board?
Yeah, you guys are making such a big difference.
Okay, open it for public comment. Any callers while Tom's coming down?
No callers, Chair.
Okay.
Tom Durkin, District 4, no place to go. Totally approve this project. It's low affordable housing. It's real housing and we totally support this.
Thank you.
Thank, thanks Tom. We'll close public comment, back to the board. Any discussion or a motion in a second?
I'd be happy to make a motion, Madam Chair. So first, thank you for the work that you do. Almost all of the Habitat homes are in my supervisory district and I worked very closely with you when I was with the city of Grass Valley and really appreciate, it is really the fastest track for affordable homeownership in our, in our community and just across the country. And I applaud you for getting to be able to build on this site because I've seen other projects come forward and have not been successful. So, kudos to you guys for getting this project through. With that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this application.
My second.
Okay.
District 5.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
District 4.
Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
District 1.
Yes. Fantastic, thanks for everything you do. I'm so grateful you're in this community, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Right.
Have a good lunch.
Okay, so now I believe we're gonna break for lunch. We'll be back at 1:30 for our timed item and we'll move our closed session until later in the day. Thanks, everybody.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We wanna have a broad spectrum. We wanna be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So, the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So, the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home. And really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's gonna be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's gonna be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So, when an ember storm comes through, it's not gonna ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer and that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed and it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed. So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So, what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster I have?
So, a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack, it could be a suitcase. It's gonna be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets if needed. That's gonna have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed, the power may be out. So, you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes, I have an insulin pump, right? And so, that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm gonna ever evacuate or be away from my house frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 211 Call Center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 211 is available 24/7. So, what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is. You know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether power's coming back on during a PSPS. 211 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So, we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone, it was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready, they were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not gonna take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning and I knew that it was a high risk. So, on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we, we didn't get too far from the house and we're watching the fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there. And it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening and I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So, it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son who lives next door picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so, I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster. So, we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And that, she saved my life that day. So, absolutely, having that network really saved lives. Find your five, the idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So, we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece. And it's simply that, it's go.
It's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order. Not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol, came in, and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residents that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock, and at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do, and the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community in a county that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 211. We're here to support you.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and knowing your zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful because you'll know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville, every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone, and having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council, and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home, and really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home so when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed, and it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed, the power may be out, so you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name is Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 211 Call Center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 211 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 211 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in Paradise, and first the house phone rang. Picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk, so on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house, and we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there, and it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air, and I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours, so it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire, and they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son who lives next door picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And she saved my life that day, so absolutely having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece, and it's simply that. It's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order. Not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol, came in, and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residents that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers... that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock, and at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do, and the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community in a county that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate. We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So, if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council, or 2-1-1. We're here to support you.
One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season, you're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zone.
We're back. Hello, everybody. We're going to move into item number 98, a resolution approving the renewal of a professional services contract between the County of Nevada and Sammy's Friends for the provision of animal shelter services. So, Craig, why don't you take it away? Introduce your...
Yeah, good afternoon, Chair Hall, members of the board. Craig Griespock, your Director of Information and General Services. I'm joined this morning by Lori Hennessy to my right, who's an administrative analyst in OES, who plays a lead role in managing our current animal shelter contract. We're also joined, on my left here, by Fran Cole, who's the president of the Sammy's Friends Board, and Emily Horneck, who is the shelter manager with Sammy's Friends. As your board knows, animal sheltering services are a core service and is an essential part of who we are as a community. Sammy's Friends has provided contract services to operate our animal shelter since 2010. Prior to that time, the county staff operated these services over the shelter. Over this past year, our team and IGS, in partnership with the Sheriff's Office, team and Sammy's Friends have collaborated to discuss and resolve challenges around increasing animal intakes and ways to minimize disruptions at our shelter. This is also coupled with navigating challenges associated to increased veterinary costs and ever-increasing complexities of animal sheltering services overall. As we have navigated these circumstances and challenges over this past year, we have identified opportunities to leverage the core strengths of both our organizations and our partners regarding an updated operational model. In collaboration with Sammy's Friends leadership, there's an opportunity to employ a hybrid program that would include the county operating the shelter while leveraging Sammy's Friends' strengths with a potential wraparound service contract. This invests in the shared mission of supporting animal welfare, maintaining the core services envisioned of animal sheltering in our community. With this approach in mind, the three-month contract extension with Sammy's Friends that you have before you today would support a smooth transition to finalize and implement this approach while maintaining animal sheltering services. I'd now like to introduce Fran Cole with Sammy's Friends, provide a bit more context on their organization and this operational approach overall. Fran?
About how we might realign our services to make sure that we are facing the challenges that we're currently facing and acting in the best interests of the animals. As all of you know, we have been inundated with animals over the last year, whether it's, you know, 50 reptiles, whether it is 37 huskies. We have been faced with unprecedented challenges that have been very difficult to deal with as a small organization. The number of animals that we have taken in has skyrocketed, and it's been very difficult for us as a small organization to meet those challenges. So, we have been in discussions with the county about ways that we might leverage our own strengths and make sure that we are operating in a way that will preserve the high level of services that we provide to animals in Nevada County. As you all know, a love for animals is a very high value in our community, and everyone wants to make sure that the needs of these animals are being met. So, we have historically changed our roles in relationships with the county. Originally, the sheriff was in charge of the shelter, and then Sammy's Friends was in charge of the shelter, and Sammy's Friends was providing medical needs. One thing that has happened is that because of the large number of animals, Sammy's Friends' mission of making sure that the well-being of animals is foremost has been really challenging because we've had so many animals. We have had to suspend our community program where we will provide medical services for community animals. We still provide funding for spay-neuter vouchers in the county. We still provide spay-neuter for feral cats in the community. However, we have been unable to rise to the occasion and provide all the services that we need in light of the huge intake. Let me talk a little bit about that. So, we have been inundated with strays, and that is due primarily to a lack of spay-neuter services in our community, and we're working on that. There are a number of organizations locally that are working on providing low-cost spay-neuter services, but until that really takes hold, we are inundated. So, we have worked closely with our partners, both with animal control and also with the county, to provide services to support animals in our community, but we need to realign those so that Sammy's Friends and the county can provide the best possible services to animals. So, what we are talking about is a realignment of services that gravitates towards the strengths of the different organizations. The county provides a great structure. The county can provide the ability to handle the large intake of animals, and then Sammy's can provide its own strengths. For example, what we are talking about is Sammy's being responsible for adoption, Sammy's being responsible for fosters and for volunteers. Right now, we have 400 volunteers in our community, and we can leverage on that. But what I had talked about with the county and with IGS is a need to realign what we're doing so that we can handle the huge influx of animals, and each organization can provide services that support them. So, what we are talking about is a realignment of services so that the county would run the animal shelter itself, and Sammy's would provide the structure for adoption, volunteers, and fostering. None of that would change. So, the actual operations of the shelter would not change, but we would provide the same level of services with the support of the county and its unique ability to provide kind of wraparound services for animals in our county.
So, this realigned operational approach will require us to create an updated budget and staffing plan that we'll return to your board for review and approval. We would also intend on continuing conversations with Sammy's Friends leadership, investigating options for wraparound service contracts, and would also return to your board for review and approval. If your board provides direction today, we would plan to return these items to you in the coming months with this information for your consideration. So, to summarize this for you, what we're looking for today in your policy direction today is approval of the resolution for contract amendment number one with Sammy's Friends for a three-month contract extension totaling $296,316 for the period of July 1st, 2025 to September 30th, 2025, and direction to return to your board with a draft budget, staffing resolution, and wraparound service contract, supporting the model for county staff operating the animal shelter and partnering with Sammy's Friends for a wraparound service contract. So, with that, that concludes our presentation. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you all. Okay. Board questions? Lisa?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Sue?
I don't really have any questions. I think this is probably a smart move to move ahead, and you guys have been challenged this year. Every time I see the intake numbers, I'm just like, blown away. So, anyway, I think we're going to continue. We need to be partners in this, so I'm looking forward to how we move forward and work together. So, thanks for bringing it, and thanks for the cooperation, working with your team and your board. So, thank you.
Hardy?
Yeah, thank you. I definitely understand this portion. I just, one of the questions, just kind of more in the broad scope, is when we bring the contract components back, is there a discussion? Because I think we've heard, or I've heard in my tenure on the board, that each year we just get more and more and more, right? More and more and more. At what level do we get involved in the actual quantifying the service provision for adoptable animals? Or like, where does it end? I guess is my question. You can throw something at me, because I know everybody loves pets. I love pets, but it is a question of resources, and if you ask me honestly, am I going to take care of somebody who's a human being or a pet? I'm going to pick a human being. That's who I am. I love pets, too, and I think they deserve all the protection, love, and support we can give them, but at what point do we interject into it and say, this is what we can afford to provide for the pets of Nevada County? And what are we doing about curbing this kind of increasing level of pets that are getting dropped off? And like, here's your pet. Take care of it and give it a bunch of really expensive medical care.
So, Hardy, I think there's a, Supervisor Block, there's a huge backdrop to what we're talking about today, and I believe that there, we can't address the problem of overpopulation of animals unless we go to the source of that. And the source really is so many unspayed, unneutered animals in our community. And Supervisor Swarthout has been working on a program to fund a low-cost spay-neuter. You know, without that happening, we will not make a difference. Right now, at our animal shelter, between 75% and 90% of the animals that arrive at that shelter have not been altered. So, the problem is, you know, it becomes exponentially, you know, aggravated throughout our community. So, what we are proposing is that we have to go to the source. We have to go to the source of the problem and make sure that we address the large number of altered animals, because without addressing that, it will be a non-stop situation where we will be inundated with unfixed animals in our community. There are a number of animal welfare organizations right now that are trying to address that in the community. We have, next week, or actually in July, we have a program which is called SNIP, where an organization that comes around throughout different communities will come and have appointments so that animals can be spayed or neutered in our community. So, that is really, in my view, the key to addressing this problem, because otherwise, it is, you know, a situation where you can't really be no-kill if you have a limited shelter, and our shelter is very aged and out of current standards. So, you know, unless we address the causes of the problems, where we're having so many animals that are being taken into our shelter, unless we address that problem, it will continue. So, I think what we're talking about is a combination of efforts. First, to address spay-neuter, try to help that in our community. And, you know, a lot of the problems are problems that can't be solved easily. There are problems that, as you talked about, in the community, we have, you know, increased homeless population. We have a situation where people can't take care of their animals. That's not going to change. There's a decreasing number of veterinarians going to vet school. There are, you know, corporations taking over veterinary practices. There are, you know, less veterinarians.
Yeah, I appreciate, I definitely appreciate that. Yep, I think I understand. I'm just wondering where the board fits into the paradigm of service provision? How do we, you're asked, we're asked to fund things, but I'm not really sure what the lever is that we pull on to change what amount we're willing to contribute to the support of many, many pets that come to the shelter. It's a bigger discussion than this item. I'll let it go, but that's something I'm thinking about. Thank you.
Right. Okay, let's open up for public comment. No public comment? Anybody calling in with public comment? No callers, Chair. Okay, we'll close public comment. Any final comments at the board?
Well, just, I just want to just comment on what Hardy said. So, we did appropriate $75,000 this year for community spay and neuter. I've been working really closely with Lori and her staff and the sheriff's animal control people on how to get the most amount of animals spayed and neutered for the amount of money. And we have, I think we've come up with a really good plan. It's really exciting. You mentioned the SNIP. I know they're going to be up here. I'm going to go check them out when they're here in July, but that is truly, the root of the problem is people not spaying and neutering their pets. And I think we are required by state statute to provide the animal care, but how we do it is within the control of the county. So, I think there's going to be some additional discussions on this. A lot of this will be helped also if we do come to a point where we build a new shelter, because our shelter is just, it's not just that it's too small. The facility is just really outdated. We had the opportunity to tour a couple of other shelters in our region, and when you see what they're doing and stemming the flow of unwanted animals has really been drastically reduced. of unwanted animals has really been drastically reduced in certain communities who have put some money into better facilities and better resources for it. But, I appreciate the work of Sammy's Friends. I know, you know, I have pets from your organization, as do many, many people in our community. Last time I saw Fran and Emily, they were dressed as a chicken and as a dog at the fundraiser that they did last weekend for the Bark-a-Thon for Sammy. So, they're really trying hard to meet the needs of the animals in the community. But, there are a lot of needs, you know, and I agree. We've got human needs. We've got pet needs, and it's complicated. But, I'm really, I'm very encouraged by the support that we have given, that the board has given for the animal community. And I think as we move forward, we'll be able to fix some of these problems.
One defining feature of our community that has always been really important to me is its love of animals. I've never lived anywhere where people have such a desire to make sure that animals have the best lives. So, I think it's an important value in our community, not that the welfare of people is not, but I think that it really is a defining value of our community that should be maintained.
Thank you. Okay, Sue?
Yeah, no, I think this is good. I won't, I know we're going along, but the spay-neuter thing is huge, because it shouldn't matter who you are as a family and where your income is. That animals mean a lot to families, but when you have those huge costs of spay-neuter, that's where we're at, right? So, when you, if you decide on groceries and spay and neuter your critters, you feed, but you can't afford that. So, that's the key component here that I see is.
And I so much appreciate, yeah, and I so much appreciate that the Board of Supervisors is willing to undertake a project that really affects that and make sure that those resources are available for people in our community.
Any other board questions or comments? Okay, then I'm looking for a motion to adopt the resolution to approving the renewal of a professional services contract between the County of Nevada and Sammy's Friends.
So moved.
Second.
District five?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to go to item 99, a resolution appointing Susan Kaderah as an interim human resources director. And Patrick, you're going to walk us through this one. Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, Chair Hall. Members of the board, Patrick Ideman, your Assistant County Executive Officer, here today regarding the appointment of an interim HR Director. As of July 2nd, that position will be vacant. So, in order to support HR and county operations as a whole, we think it's very important to have a director in that role. We're fortunate that we have someone available to serve as a retired annuitant that has deep experience both with the county but also in HR leadership positions. Susan Kaderah, who retired from the county but has been serving in a temporary role to support labor negotiations. Per CalPERS, there are some requirements to appoint a retired annuitant into an interim director role, including, as a retired annuitant, she can't serve more than 960 hours. She needs to have specialized knowledge and skills for the position, which is certainly true. The county needs to be engaged in active recruitment to fill the director position, all of which are met. CalPERS also recommends, for full transparency, that this item come before the board in open session and receive approval for the appointment. So, with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, public comment? Do we have any callers?
No callers.
Closing public comment. Back to the board.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. District five?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan, for coming back. We appreciate that. Okay, Patrick, good thing you're sticking there. Next item is an item brought by Supervisor Hook and Bullock, a request to amend Government Code Section 26802.5 to add Nevada County to the list of counties authorized to appoint a registrar of voters. Patrick, you want to introduce the item?
Yeah, Patrick Ideman, your Assistant County Executive Officer, here on behalf of the ad hoc, currently filled by Supervisors Hook and Bullock. For board item 25-1795, is a request to amend California Government Code 26802.5 to add Nevada County to the list of counties approved to appoint a registrar of voters. To give you a little background, Government Code 26802.5 includes a list of those counties that have been permitted or approved by the state to have the registrar of voters appointed by the Board of Supervisors. We have an opportunity in the form of the Local Government Omnibus Act of 2025 for Nevada County to be added to that list. Kern County was the first to signal interest this year, which, again, presents an opportunity for Nevada County without going through a lot of legislative maneuvering to be added to this list. In order to proceed on this, the Board of Supervisors must submit a letter to the Senate Local Government Committee requesting consideration of this issue. Currently, there are 14 approved counties, the list of which are on the screen, and then, as I mentioned, Kern County has requested to be added. So, Nevada County would be potentially the 16th to be approved. It's important to note, in terms of the outcome of the request, that if the request is approved and Nevada County's added to the list, there will be no immediate change to local government operations. It would require passage of an ordinance at the local level to pursue appointment of the registrar. So, what we're requesting today is simply the opportunity to be added to the list so that this board or some future board has the opportunity to consider making the change, which essentially would separate the registrar of voters from the clerk recorder function, and again, the registrar would be appointed. With that, happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you so much. I'm going to turn it over to Supervisor Bullock. Could you like to start? So, you and Sue Hook had the conversation about this.
You bet. Yep. This is a pretty simple and straightforward kind of legislative move from my position. I think that the ad hoc concluded that there's really no downside to creating a future option for the board. Under certain scenarios, it may be appropriate. It's not necessarily a discussion for today's item, and today's item is really just giving the board the option to do it. So, we saw really no downside to that. That's kind of it for me.
No, I think that, I agree, Hardy. I think, and the other idea is to look at, how is it working in other counties? I mean, it gives us opportunity to pursue information as well at the county level. So, and whether it happens now or three boards from now, it gives somebody that opportunity for change with a lot of public input.
Okay. Lisa, any comments, questions? Rob? Okay. Open public comment. Any callers?
No callers, Chair.
Okay, closing public comment. Back to the board.
Motion to approve.
Second. Great. District five?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
Thanks, Patrick. Thanks. Also, Supervisors Hook and Bullock for putting that forward. We are going to skip announcements, so we're now going into closed session, which should be the last item of the day. Lorianne, am I missing something?
No.
Okay. So, Kit, could you read us in, please?
Yes, Chair Hall. So, the last, now, the closed session item is County Council's requesting closed session regarding real property negotiations. The negotiator for the county is Ryan Grover, and the negotiators for all of the properties or owners are as listed. There are an extensive number of properties, so we will be discussing those as listed on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. We'll just come out to report out when we're finished, and otherwise, we're going to be adjourned. Oh, public comment on this. Any callers?
No callers for closed session.
Public comment closed. Thank you. Thank you.